Thank you all for coming to the Alta Town Council Special Meeting and Strategic Planning Retreat. And I appreciate your being here, and we've got a lot to do, so let's get on with the show.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. I'm Julie DeLong, and I think we're all familiar with each other. It's great to see you again, and it's great to be here at beautiful Alta with all of you today. We have a lot to get done, so we might as well jump right in. We're recording and videographing and all the things today for this meeting. So we do have multiple recorders that will run the entire time and a videographer here. We'll have a moment, in a moment, we'll all do introductions and expectations, but I just wanted to spend a moment talking about our purpose and desired outcomes for our session today. We're really going to spend a lot of time talking about the capital projects and planning that you've all been deeply involved with for quite a long time now, and excited to take this next step in this special meeting. We'll also be spending some time talking about the funding mechanisms that may be practical and best, and really look forward to that conversation with the folks from Zion's Bank. By the end of the day, we will have reviewed and discussed facilities plan highlights. We'll be discussing alternative approaches while we also prioritize cost resilience and accessibility. We'll be, of course, spending more time talking about how to finance public projects and outlining next steps for us. So with that, would you change the slide, please? Thank you. So this is our agenda. I know you've all seen it, so we won't spend time talking about that today or at the moment. Meeting agreements, these don't typically change, and I know you've seen them before, but just quickly, thank you so much for focusing on what needs to happen now in this meeting today. I appreciate your attention and good strategic thinking as we ask the hard questions of each other and answer them as best as we can. Please, if you have sidebar discussions, know that it's really hard for the recorders to pick that up, and we feel like you might be missing something that's happening with the larger group. Again, pithy, one of my favorite words. We're making a point and not telling a whole entire story as we are having these discussions, so thank you for being brief, if you can. We only have a few hours. And use humor as a gift, not a weapon. Anything to add to that list? So as we've all been preparing for this meeting, I know you have been thinking about what we'll be doing, and I'd love to just capture what are your expectations for today's session? I'm not sure. Who wants to go first?
I would like to see an actionable plan for our facilities strategy.
Okay.
Want me to scrub for you?
Oh, yeah. What color? You can, like, switch off.
Yeah, we'll see.
Actionable, Dan, actionable plan. Good. Carolyn?
Whoa. Put me on the spot, Julie. I have, I don't want Chris to dictate what I'm going to say here. I'm being pithy. I'm going to skip my turn.
Ah, she's going to wait. Mayor?
Okay. What I would like to do is come out of here with everybody on the same page on these issues.
Same page. So shared agreement. Okay. Elise?
I just want to come out with some good direction for the town staff and Chris as the manager, so they can move forward and get what they need out of this.
Yeah, I think that's a smart answer. I don't think all of the questions are yet right to have a definitive action plan going forward. I think there's still a list of some other pieces that we need. I noticed that Chris did change the test fit one. Did you revise the test fit one?
We maybe get into what you mean by that, but I iterated some other alternatives, but the test fit should be, it might be my narrative around the test fit that is inconsistent, which I apologize for.
Right, but was that you were developing a bit of a case for the Marshals Office only at the community center site, and that was sort of new?
That is basically test fit one. But let's talk more about that when we get to the alternatives.
So I think there's some things that are, you know, still, like, I don't think those options are super fully fleshed out yet, and I hope that we can come up with a list of, like, things so that Chris can check those boxes and move closer to a point where we can have an action plan, maybe before the end of the year, I think would be reasonable.
Okay.
But it's great for me.
Craig, you're up.
What I, any direction we're going, we're talking about a lot of money. And the issue that the council has the most control over is actually the buildings, the above-ground buildings that we're building. So what I would hope is that we come out with a general direction and a set of questions around what we want to build.
I know what you mean.
To me, that's an actionable plan. Yeah.
Yeah. I look really forward to the Zion's presentation and learning more about funding and funding strategies and understanding that. That's the thing I'm the most excited about today.
Good. Mike?
It's going to be hard for me today without weaponized humor.
You're licensed.
I would like to transition from known options to selections.
Sounds like action plan in different words, but I like that, too. Okay, Chris?
Yeah, oh, don't forget Brooke. She's hiding in the corner.
Let's go with, okay, either one.
Why is Brooke hiding in the corner?
She's running it all.
Okay, sorry, you have to do it from over there.
She needed to do it.
Okay, sorry.
My goals are to refine the concept. I think, I think we've all sort of said the same thing. This is somewhat uncharted territory for us in terms of the scope of this project as a group, and we have it, the town hasn't done a capital project this big since 1994 when we built the town office. And we're really sorting through a lot, like, generations of hopes and dreams for a community center. We've had this big shift towards maintaining the assets we already have in the last couple years. So I think my goal for today is to move the ball down the field, essentially, and I think we're prepared to do that.
Okay, Brooke?
I just hope that everything's, I hope you have a great day.
Tech support is awesome. Molly, I hate to put you on the spot. You're up.
I share Brooke's opinion.
Okay. That today's meeting goes smoothly. Okay, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate your help. So now I'll, happy to pass it over to Chris, who spent quite a bit of time preparing all of this.
As usual, not quite enough time, nor well enough in advance to feel 100% prepared. Okay, more coffee's on the way. Brooke, are you ready for the next slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So thank you for your patience with me. As I got the materials together for this, there were numerous snafus with documents getting distributed on Friday. These slides have been updated a couple of times. I know I sent out another version of them the other night, I believe that was two nights ago. This version has yet another couple of edits. I'd be interested if you noticed them. This slide is one of those places. So we've all been on this journey together for the most part. I think we really, the sort of watershed moment that led us to this point where we have a facilities plan for us to consider was in January of 2024, we were together here for our first strategic retreat as council and staff, and we had that great realization that we need to focus on, in the medium-term future, the town must prepare to replace the assets we've had in place for up to 50 years in some cases. Before that, we really didn't have a plan for replacement of existing facilities, particularly Alta Central, which is our oldest building, as we'll get into. So that's a, that's a pretty big shift to sort of aspirations around building a community center with not even question marks, but just sort of, they were unknown unknowns. What are we going to do if Alta Central is no longer serviceable? So anyways, again, we've all here in the room lived these other milestones. We started the facilities planning project in September of last year, just about a year ago. We worked some of the cost level, planning level cost estimates into our budgets for this year, into our capital plans for this year, not really so much our budgets. We did acquire OLS, which of course, you know, we're sitting in it here today. It's quite an episode in the history of the town and the community. It does give us a significant flexibility as we contemplate a program for this new facility that we're at this point moving towards building. Next slide. So the facilities plan, it's done. I've continued engaging with Nate a little bit to just to sort of help me understand how to extract some of the space planning and cost estimation work they did to think about other alternatives besides the two test fits. You all have, we've reviewed most of the important parts, sort of the mechanical parts of the document. So I provided you these highlights. One section I didn't highlight is the facility condition assessments, because all of us have discussed those a few different times already. But for anybody in the public who's, you know, not been following along with our meetings, the facility condition assessments are really the foundation of the recommendations and of the recommendations to repair or replace, which we will get into in the next slide. So I'll just walk through the, kind of, the summary, the bottom line of the facility condition assessments of the three buildings, of our three primary buildings as of last September, which are Alta Central, the community center, firehouse building, and the town office. FFKR was the architecture firm we hired to lead the study. Their recommendation for Alta Central is to decommission it as a police department building or other essential facility, and to move Alta Marshall's office functions to a new building. The reasons why are essentially, it's a very old building. It came up the canyon on a truck on two different flatbeds in the 50s. It was taken over by the town in 73. It's on a rubble foundation, sort of harvested from native rock. And as such, it does not satisfy the building code for essential facilities. Essentially, it has to be disaster resilient. It has to be designed to have a police department building that satisfies the building code. It has to be resilient to earthquake, wind loading, and other foreseeable hazards. It's, Alta Central is not designed with any sort of seismic risk mitigation in mind. It's not built to spec, and it's in an avalanche path. And of course, something we've not talked about is that it's potentially our most at-risk facility to wildfire hazard, which is something that we're going to actually be digging into at the town over the next couple of months. It is a remarkably functional structure and facility given its age, I think, because it's, to some extent, our, we have the most constant operations in it, so we have a lot of eyes on the building systems and the structure, and we do maintain the snow around it. Next slide. So the community center. FFKR recommends demolishing the community center, and that's the direction the town's been heading in for a while, for a while, at least 20 years. We talked about replacing that building. The community center has significant structural issues. The wood-framed annexes on the side of the building are separating from the concrete structure that's kind of the core of the building. The big winter of 2023 revealed that the roof may not be rated for the snow loads we experienced that winter, and the structural analysis that was part of the FFKR work indicated that, in fact, it does not satisfy the snow loading requirements we apply to new construction in the town of Alta. It is our most accessible site, both in terms of just general usability and public access. It has the best potential to be a year-round ADA accessible site for a building. We do believe it's less exposed to large avalanche paths than our buildings here, which we know are exposed to large avalanche paths. We have not done our own study of that site. It's not clear anybody's ever done a formal avalanche analysis of that site, but I'll show a graphic later of a pretty sophisticated avalanche study that seems to suggest it's less exposed. Next slide. The town office is somewhat obviously are the best, in the best shape of those three buildings. FFKR recommends continuing to use the town office. It does have significant accessibility challenges. We've all experienced the sort of the adventurous nature of accessing the building in the winter. But again, FFKR recommends that we continue to use the building, either in its current program of use, which is as a center for the administration, or potentially as a shared space for the administrative functions of the town, as well as like a dispatch operations center or something like that. Next slide. Here's some notes from me. These issues were not necessarily the focus or the outcome of FFKR's work. In the upper right, I have an excerpt from a UDOT avalanche study from about 10 years ago that shows maximum observed runouts for the big paths in the center of town. The sort of, the neighborhood we're in right now is in the upper left side, next to the mile marker 12 dot. And as you can see, both the town office and Alta Central appear to be exposed, and we know that there's a record of Alta Central being hit by an avalanche early in Marshall Mike Maury's career at Alta Central. Whereas, up further up into the right along the highway, you can see the community center site and the rustler are less exposed. So again, if we build a new building, we'll have to do our own avalanche study, which might yield different findings, but that is similar to what other studies look like. Another thing I wanted to point out, this is an excerpt from the UDOT easement for Highway 210. You can see here that much of the parking we rely on to access these two buildings is private property, or at least some portion of that prism here is private property, and we're all aware that there are, that that property could be redeveloped at some point in the future, which could put that parking at risk. So that would leave us relying on, this is Forest Service land with a UDOT easement. Over at the town has special use permits, really for, we have a couple of different special use permits that apply to this parking here. So that is relatively reliable in the future, but not all of it is. And the other thing I just want to highlight in summary is that these, all of our buildings have significant accessibility challenges, and there are all the risks and impacts associated with that.
All right. Go on. Yes? One thing we kind of leave out is that town owns a lot of property off to the right of this lower right figure, which is parking lot.
Yeah.
And so we do have parking. You just have to walk a little further to get to these. And the other, the other interesting thing is that among the buildings that are in the mix here, this one, I don't think has been really evaluated by this group.
No, it's not, because we didn't own it. Yes, and I think we, the way we, it, we discussed the pros and cons to the town owning the facility, which were numerous, but the, in my assessment, the impact of it on our facilities outlook is that we now have a multipurpose space or a community center space, and so we can deprioritize or jettison or abandon such space in a new building.
Can you show, can you just, I don't, can you show where the private, the land that we own, that we were going to put a community center on, that we now are not using?
I, I can't back out of this, but it's, it's, it's basically where the asphalt sort of bulges out into the, into the slope here. Yes, it is, yes, a large avalanche path. It hasn't hit the town since 1973, I believe, but, well.
And I still have one other, I just have a question. Is Friends of Alta still in our building, or they are, they are still there?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So that is just another thing that we have to factor into the puzzle if we keep providing space for them.
Well, but their lease is, has a limited life, does it not? I mean, expires at some point.
Year to year, though, I don't know.
Okay. So that's the facility condition assessment. After that, in the document, they get into, the document moves into an analysis of what, what we need. So we assessed what we have, and FFKR took some input from staff and also had a session with the council to try to understand what the future town of Alta facilities portfolio needs to provide. I should have probably flipped this, flipped these around. I guess I would focus on the facility recommendation decision tree first. This is, I think, pretty self-explanatory if you've been engaged in this analysis over the last year, but essentially, you can see that the solid lines represent recommendations. The dotted lines recommend, indicate, you know, potential directions for the town to take, and then the gray lines are outcomes that FFKR does not recommend. So here we see the recommendation that the community center be demolished, and that Alta Central be moved into a new building, whereas the town office building could be replaced, the functions could be moved into a new building, but, but it's not necessary at this time because the building's in such great shape. So from here, we went further into this analysis of what we need in the future. The size of these shapes represent the amount of square footage that we all told FFKR our various functions of the town need in the future, if we could have everything we wanted. So this is kind of a, this is a everything and the kitchen sink approach. And then the relationship between the spaces indicate what needs to be adjacent to each other, and of course, a key relationship here, given our, our understanding of the accessibility challenges, is the relationship of all these functions to the highway. So the Marshals Office must be adjacent to the highway, the police functions, so that those, so that our police officers can respond without the need to, like, you know, hike down a snowy slope through three feet of new snow and wipe off their vehicles.
Chris, one question?
Yes.
For clarity under support spaces, we're really talking about like either vehicle bay or, you know, storage of stuff and things that we need access to, or what is?
Support spaces, the storage is mostly programmed into Marshall's office and administration. Support spaces is more like hallways, stairways, some minor storage spaces, like where we keep the sign, you know, like where we keep the signs, restrooms, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. Yeah. Yep.
That's really true. I understood that.
So kind of the last major component of FFKR's work was to produce two very conceptual non, these are not designs, but they're test fits of functional spaces at the town, functional spaces that the town needs to provide in our facilities in the future. So they take the adjacencies, they take our wish list of existing and future functional space, and then they sort of mash them all together to yield these two outcomes. Again, we've, we've discussed these at the council. If my, if these bullet points or my representation of them today don't match your recollection or your reading from the actual document, please do speak up. But test fit number one assumes we tear down the, the community center, the old firehouse, and we put a new building up there. We move all of the Alta Marshall's office functions to that building. We add additional functional space for the Marshall's office, including a little bit of dispatch space. Sometimes we talk about the Marshall's office, there's a police function and a dispatch function. They're both significant staff organizations, so that's just something to keep in mind, that the Marshall's office is the entire program. Test fit one includes the existing functions at the community center, including perhaps most importantly, a police, sorry, post office, our contract US post office. It includes our multipurpose space where we have council meetings, it's kind of the community center. It includes the square footage of the reading room and what was formerly an office space for A, so the whole, you know, rectangular space in the upper floor of the community center building. And of course, the garage bay is underneath, that's, sorry, back, Brooke, if you don't mind. Yeah, 14,000 square foot. This test fit and the cost that you see for the test fit does assume renovations to the town office recommended by that interdisciplinary team that did the facility condition assessments. So as we start to talk about, you know, possible à la carte projects that are, you know, bits and pieces of these test fits, just keep in mind that they don't necessarily include any work on the town office. So, you know, going forward, if we decide to do one of these bigger test fit type projects, we could decide for the time being to extract the costs of renovations to the town office, essentially to bring it up to code. So we'll just leave that there. Both of these test fits would require additional footprint up there at the community center. Our land at the community center is a postage stamp under the footprint of the building, the width of which is essentially the corners of the wood frame annexes, and then the frontage is really, it's just a couple of feet in front of the building. It might be 10 feet, which puts it too close for comfort to the highway. I'm confident we can work with the Forest Service to use more land under a special use permit, and there may be some potential for us to exchange out of that parcel that Roger was asking about up here in the Flagstaff parking lot. Thank you, Brooke. Okay, test fit two. This is the biggest, most expensive concept that I think we'll be discussing, that we've discussed so far, and that we'll discuss going forward. New building at the community center site that would house the police functions of the Alta Marshall's office, but not dispatch. And it would also house the administrative functions of the town office. So primarily the upstairs, what happens upstairs in the town office building, some of the storage downstairs would move up to the community center, and that, that is the, that is the accessibility, that, this is the alternative that prioritizes accessibility across, accessibility to our most public-facing functions of the town. The town office, of course, is in great shape. This test fit proposes remodeling the town office into the dispatch center. So dispatch quarters and dispatch operations would move into the town office building, and the thinking there is that there is essentially no need for the public, for customers and constituents, to go visit dispatch. This is a bigger building by 3,000 square feet or so on the community center site, assuming that the existing functions of the community center also stay in this building, and then it's, the entire square footage of the town office is renovated. So again, the cost estimates for this test fit to assume about $1 million in remodel costs for the town office, which seems a little low to me, but at any rate.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Maybe this is something for later, but is it, I mean, this is more for Maury, is it better for you to have dispatch with the Marshall's building together, or are you okay with them being separate? I mean, they kind of are in a little way now, but.
Yeah, we can be functional either way. Yeah, there's always going to be a need for us to, you know, in-person react with, with one another. You know, I'd really go back and forth on, you know, if we were to be, you know, co-located in the same building, you know, we'd need some physical delineation, you know, this concept, you know, provides that organically.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I like, like, about these.
We can make it work either way.
What's the better way?
What's your three-way? What about that?
Well.
What's your three-way?
I think that out of necessity, we run differently than. out of necessity, we run differently than anywhere in, in law enforcement, probably for sure in the county, probably in the state. There's, there's a fine balancing act between the on-duty operational staff and the people who are in queue to go on shift. And so, we need a facility that allows our off-duty personnel to have quarters, be unaffected by the noise and, and those kind of things that, you know, going on in the dispatch thing. Because if you're up all night waiting for your shift, you know, because of radio noise, you know, you're not going to be a very efficient dispatcher when you do come on duty. So, I hate to say creature comfort, but we, we need some functional quiet space for dispatch.
So it sounds like a separate place is your preference?
We want to keep them segregated away from distractions.
And the ADA compliance of that requirement is certainly less than the public facing things and everything else.
Yeah, we don't consider.
There is no perfect answer in this town.
Yeah, we, we don't consider, well, Alta Central has to be secure from the public facility. You know, so there's, there's really not an everyday need for public access there.
Or for the employees, it's, it's, there's.
You know, so there's always going to be an accessibility issue. You know, if we continue to keep Alta Central, you know, up on the slope here, you know, we're going to have contractors, we're going to have inter-agency visitors, you know, they're going to have to come up and log in and, you know, be escorted.
Can I, can I just, can I just respond to something, to something that you just said? I, I just, I don't believe that ADA compliance respects public versus internal or employee access. The facility is either ADA compliant or it's not. And so, you know, it's, it, like a building, the town office as a dispatch center would not be, it would be hard pressed to make it ADA accessible much of the year. And it's not technically right now in the summertime. So, it's just a choice we have to make.
No, that, yeah, I'm trying, that, that's, I'm trying to drive towards that filter.
Yeah.
Because we, we can't, we're not going to make that building ADA compliant. It's not going to happen. Not, not, not fully blah, 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 like to your point. And so, I was just curious to Mike's preference operationally, and that is a factor.
I think for me, it's not necessarily like the buildings that need to be ADA. It's more kind of like what this study took and says, what services the town provides needs to be by the road.
Right.
And that's kind of how I view it. And it sounds like dispatch does not need to be by the road.
Right now, our accessibility concerns for our staff are secondary to, you know, the public that we, we might have to deal with witnesses, you know, suspects, victims, and all that, that we need to be able to bring, you know, from the highway into an office space.
Okay, good. Good. This was, I just curious. Sorry.
I mean, the, the downside of having something right on the road is the noise and disturbance.
We are.
Yeah, I'm sure you are. And I wonder if that's, give it, what's your preference on that versus, I mean, having dispatch in, in this yellow block versus having a, up the hill there?
Mike Gett tells me to keep dispatch over on this side of town.
Bet.
If you can know. Yeah. Good to you.
How can I suppose?
Yeah.
So, I, I like this chart.
Yeah.
Yes. So can you tell, can you tell me how this connects to these two slides? Because I, this is the more than a wag.
You want to advance to more than a wag? With a bag of salt? Yeah. Do you like the, do you get the salt? The metaphor?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Yeah. Take it with a grain of salt. I, yeah, right. 20 pounds. Yeah. Do you want to advance to that slide? This is, this is the red box, and this is the yellow box. Makes sense? And I do have some asterisks. So again, these, like I said earlier, the, the test fits include renovations to the town office. They do include multipurpose space, which we are now setting in a multipurpose space. The other alternatives, most of their alternatives up here, one, two, four, and five do not. I added another alternative.
Right, which is the one that Chris and I are gravitating to. So, in, in that one, which is really just the police, right?
Post office.
This is focused, so, I wasn't sure it was really worth adding this in. This is actually an idea that Sarah McCloskey shared with me. This is a, this, so this is new, and I am going to try to speak to it. This has the most assumptions. I think if Nate Henry, the FFKR project manager, were in here, he'd be sort of, you know, he'd, he'd have some, maybe some concerns with my representation of this. But basically, the concept is we put a new building at the community center site. That is the police, that's where the police function takes place, and it has some array of existing functions in there as well. Really, it would be the post office, and we'd have to make a decision about multipurpose space. Much of the rest of it is effectively Alta Marshal's Office space already. So that's, so there's our, there's new, it's two buildings. This is two new builds, with, the cost impacts of which are definitely not represented in this. But obviously, but it's, my understanding is typically more expensive to, to build two buildings than it is one, various other things being equal. So the second new building would be a small building on the Alta Central footprint that is just dispatch quarters. And then the basement of the town office is remodeled as the dispatch operations center. So. Yes.
And so is the 7,000 foot, 7,170 foot, is that the footprint, or is that the total square footage, and the footprint's really 3,500 square feet?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know that we can necessarily say what the footprint is because.
Well, I guess my question is, would the footprint, the smaller number, the 7,000 number, whatever the footprint it's going to acquire, would that fit onto the site without us acquiring more land? Would that fit onto the existing site?
I don't think so. Well, I'm, now I'm trying to remember what my assumption was about whether this includes, so, let me just talk through all the alternatives here. This is just me brainstorming, using what the, what the, what the facility condition assessment products provide in terms of high level cost per square foot, cost estimates. If we don't want to do a big building, we can do a number of things. We can just replace Alta Central, and this is location agnostic. Alta Central is currently 3,100 square feet. The cost estimate's actually, when you add soft costs to that $800 per square foot they were using, comes out to about, it's actually $1,013. I used a straight $1,000 factor in here. So, we can just replace the existing functions of Alta Central. We can pursue efficiencies with space, which we're kind of already doing. We can just replace the community center, bigger building, 4,600 square feet of total functional space over there presently. Four points.
And number two is keeping the functions the same as it is now, we just replace.
Yes, this is just like-for-like replacement of existing, no remodel to the town office. Maybe this is helpful, maybe it's not. Again, three, this is what I tried to cobble together last night. So, the number two, the, the two equals dispatch quarters over there, that is me multiplying by 1,000, the amount of square footage that dispatch said they needed in a future facility for quarters. So that's, I forget how much, how many square feet that is.
I mean, I think the big concern is, or at least some of us, I think, we're hoping that test fit one would be executable on the land that we own over there now. And so, I guess I'm searching for is this mix of potpourri in number three.
Yeah.
Is that executable on the land we own now? Because, you know, there's also the element of time, and then a next, a building that would be executable on something that we already own, maybe a year faster, six months, a year faster.
I don't see a special use permit process if that's what it's going to be, taking more than a, a year. We would maybe have to do an environmental assessment as opposed to, we'd have to do NIPA.
But still, if you could execute it on the, the land that we already own, Mike would be somewhat closer to having use NIPA extension.
Yeah, yeah, fair.
The only thing about number two, and I just know this from kind of watching the Albion Grill process, is that. No, the number two in your, your, sorry, building number two in your number three box of dispatch quarters, is that when you're going to have housing in an avalanche path, the building remodel could be really expensive. So that's the only thing that I'm thinking about with number two, is that if dispatch quarters, right now that building probably, like you said, I don't know, if it got hit by an avalanche, whatever. But like, to rebuild a building, we would have to obviously do match code, and there is a big avalanche path. Correct, yeah. So I don't know the, what the cost would be. So I feel like that, that number three option that you've listed here might be a little bit more than we have estimated. Because like you said, this was a last night.
Yeah. And I think our, the $800 per square foot, plus an additional 20% for, for soft costs, seems at the bottom end of what's a reasonable assumption for us. I don't think it's reasonable on this site in an avalanche path. I just don't. Because of the sheer amount of concrete and rebar and design, design time, that, that have to go into a building. So, this, this estimate does not take that into consideration. I have no idea what it would cost to build five dorm rooms and a, you know, a living room on Alta Central that's below grade and 1,000 pounds per square foot. No idea.
I like the idea. I, I think that, I like the idea, the out-of-the-box kind of idea of using our existing, like John was saying, parcels that we own and trying to stay within the footprint. I just, I'm not sure, I, it'd be interesting to get like an actual cost estimate and compare it to all of them, but that would take time.
Let me see one thing about the print. When Chris and I talked to statistic ranger Adam, one of the things we talked about was getting a special use permit for more space behind the building so we could protect it better from the rock slides that are coming down. And that seemed to be pretty palatable.
Yeah.
Rather than expanding outside to put more building on.
We don't own the entire slope that's collapsing onto the building. We don't own the land where the footings of the, it's, it's essentially a chain link fence with like footings poured at the top of that slope. It's on forest land. So we have to get a special use permit one way or another up there. But, but it, but if it's, if it's excavating significantly more cut slope, can you go to the next slide, Brooke, by the way?
Chris?
So, yeah.
Did, do, do you agree that Adam was, was, thought that would be relatively easy to get that back part?
To go deeper, to go deeper.
Yeah.
Okay. But to go deeper, which I've always been a fan of, actually would involve blowing up the hard rock. It's like, because it appears like it's hard rock behind it, right?
So, this is one of, this is my favorite historic Alta photo for the time being. Jonathan Morgan and I think that this is a photo from the event dedicating the Landis ski jump, of Landis? I want to say Nansen, but that's in New Hampshire, over there by the jump hill. So this is the Engen Brothers. You can see there's flowers coming out of their hands. And this is the community center site. This is, here is the rock shelter, otherwise one's the snow pine. You can see there's no rustler lodge on the mine dump here. So this is presumably from the 40s. Look at this three bay garage, just west and on the other side of the highway from, from the snow pine. So there's been, that, who knows how old the cut slope behind the building is. I can't imagine that, it, my understanding is Dave Hoden installed the rockfall netting behind the building in 1983. But, I just thought that was really cool to point out. We don't know. We don't know. Maybe somebody is alive who could tell us what that building was before we were operating there. Yeah, right on. Okay. The other photograph up here is another, is a photo that Jonathan found and sent to me. Little compliment avalanche guys, we're always looking for some depiction of those big design avalanches. So this is a photo from the 60s or maybe the 70s of an avalanche. You can see a crown all the way across Toledo, and all the way up from the Flagstaff shoulder. This is the terrain that hits the town office, all the way up, across Flagstaff face into Binkses. You can see a fracture here. This is M01 in the Flagstaff's, Flagstaff Mine Starting Zone. So you can see, this is really a, this is a size four avalanche. This is the kind of avalanche that affects our buildings and, and the highway in the center of town. Craig, I don't know if you, where Colts Cabin would be, but, yeah, it's over there somewhere. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I think what's hard about these, that I've just learned in talking to Jonathan, what's hard about like the ADL and some of these other things, is that these avalanche studies that come out, they don't take into account the mid, the daily mitigation efforts. It's really, they, they, they like, that's like the current way that they do avalanche studies. And I know there are some people out there in the industry that are trying to kind of move that, because these obviously didn't have VSINs and all that stuff above the tier. And so it's real, it is really hard when you get these avalanche studies done, and you do have to build these buildings to a certain way because of the cost of them. But when you're doing avalanche mitigation on a regular basis, but they can't really factor it into the code that way.
Right, because it's active. Well, they only will move the red zone line if it's passive. Like if you have a passive system, then you can say it's a devastated.
It's changing a little.
Well, there's no evidence, there's no, there's been no scientific conclusion that mitigation or scare compaction affects the frequent, the return interval or the magnitude of these big avalanches. Because when we get into the kind of storm cycle that produces these conditions, nobody's skiing. And the slide that hit the Alphalodge in 73, they were unable to access the gun mount the night before. So they took 24 hours in between mitigation missions. They got, you know, 20 inches of grapple, and a big slide low in the slope released that hit the avalanche. So, I think the jury's still out on whether the kind of avalanche that's going to hit the Albion Day Lodge, or the Alphalodge of the town buildings is, is affected by mitigation. It's reasonable to assume it's reducing the likelihood. And we haven't had that slide since 19, really since 1973. So, okay. Key issues with the town buildings. Accessibility, resilience. I mean, I left off, you know, vast building code non-compliance, but it's of course, in a couple of our buildings, you know, the old buildings are by and large out of code. Another big issue is that it's expensive to build anywhere, but especially in Alta, and we have a small budget. So we're going to get into that here in the second half of the meeting today. The recommendations are to tear down the community center and focus a new building on that site because it's the most accessible and it's the most resilient, as far as we know, it's the most resilient to avalanche exposure. They recommend that we decommission, don't necessarily recommend we demolish Alta Central, but that we, we discontinue its use as a critical facility. The town office is in good shape. We should keep accessibility in mind, but continue to use, you know, as much of that square footage as we can. We can optimize our use of the existing square footage and functional space we have at the town office. And then again, yes, the FFKR recommends, I think we're all moving in the direction of putting Alta, the Alta Marshal's Office, the entire program of the Alta Marshal's Office, including dispatch in a new building.
I think this will be the only time in history, if you go back to that slide, that we will ever use the word tariff in the town for planning.
Well, I hope you're right. Okay, next slide. This is new from my deck the other night. John and I were sort of chatting about this. What a, what a, we're on the cusp of, we're, it feels like we're always on the cusp of the next Alta here, right? There's always some big change on the horizon for the community that affects all of its constituents and stakeholders. And we just don't know what the future holds here in Alta. We are a boutique municipality, provide critical services. We do it a little bit on a shoestring, especially the Alta Marshal's Office. We're doing what we can to sustain the Alta Marshal's Office. We've take, made, made some great progress, but there, we're always. Office. We've take, make, made some great progress. But there, we're always gonna run a lean program. And there are gonna be risks associated with essentially staffing one officer at a time. And it just, I don't know how we're gonna get to, to double the size of a sworn staff in the Alta Marshal's Office, given our revenues. It's always gonna be hard to staff police departments. I mean, it, I don't know what's gonna change in the, you know, regional labor market to make it easy to fill police, police jobs. And there are, there are always going to be alternatives to having a local police department out there, such as UPD. There are, I think there are, there's a really strong case to keeping the Alta Marshal's Office. We're a unique environment that I think demands a, a local, on the ground presence for police and dispatch. But again, we just don't know. We don't know what's coming down the pike. The same can really be said for, for the administration, or essentially the entire town of Alta. If the administration goes away, the Alta Marshal's Office has to develop a much larger administrative capability. You know, we, we, it is likely that the administration is going to, the, what we outsource, not the jurisdiction, but the administration of the jurisdiction, is likely, the outsourcing mix is likely to, to change over time. The Metropolitan Service, the Municipal Services District of Greater Salt Lake is, who essentially provides the administrative function over at Brighton. You're welcome to go ask some folks in Brighton how they like the MSD. I think, I think we do, we provide a nice product up here. But we've got to think about costs. And, you know, do we have the scale up here to support a municipality? Same goes for our water and sewer. I mean, I think, I think some of us recognize that the question of how to really sustain that infrastructure on the scale of our, of our, our rates and rate payer's scale is, is, it's a big question. It's a hard problem. So we've got, if we're gonna continue to provide services at all, we gotta do it in sustainable facilities and with sustainable infrastructure. I think we're all, I think we've all arrived at that consensus.
And the whole critical mass aspect of it, that's what the new legislation that passed last year, where they're forcing all these little, yes, carve out places, unincorporated states to incorporate or annex. And that they're not gonna allow it to be unincorporated areas within the county anymore. And that could get two more years to be in compliance, three years from the original legislation. And it's all aimed at the same thing, where the county's being asked to provide services, and it's, they're complaining about the lack of economy of scale, because there's these isolated pockets, rather than the cohesive boundary.
Do you have that, John, to be a threat to our existence?
You know, we're in, as long as we stay incorporated, I think if we wanted to unincorporate, that it would be an issue. I, you know, presumably we're gonna stay incorporated and stay independent. But when you think about what I, where I stumbled into that, I was thinking, well, what happens if we do unincorporate? You know, what does that look like? And what it looks like is you quickly become part of the county. They don't really let you maintain your own identity anymore.
Yeah, they're moving in the other direction. The state is forcing that. And I think that becomes an open ended question. Where does Snowbird go with this thing?
I feel like it keep, I feel like this, like what John just said, just makes me feel like we're ahead of the game compared to everybody out there. Like we are, you know, we got, we're established, we're incorporated, we're, or, you know, whatever. So I feel like we are ahead of the game on that. And I also, these big picture quandaries, I mean, who knows what'll happen. We had a plane, we had a plane crash, crashing, you know, town just never heard of. We can have a huge plane, I mean, we can have a huge plane crash and blow up the town. I mean, but I'm just saying that as a council member, I can only plan for where we are right now and hope to plan for the future. But like, I don't think I can weigh any of these things in necessarily. I feel like if we're gonna keep operating, your blue box down there is where we're at. Like, I mean, yeah, I, I don't, we could unincorporate, but I don't, yeah.
But I also wonder about how much COVID and remote working has changed everything that we do. And, you know, I walk into the beautiful town offices, and I'm like, wow, is, are, is that space truly efficiently used? And does everybody really go to work there? And if you do, that's fricking fantastic. But if we're building space for people that aren't gonna come, the company I work for, all those, they, all our offices closed, because we're all, we all prefer to be remote. So I don't know how
We're pretty analog still.
You're pretty what, sir?
We're pretty analog still. And that's, I mean, we can talk about that a little bit later, but, I mean, we will continue to evolve. The administration will continue to evolve, and I don't see how it gets more analog and more paper intensive. But for the time being, we have a huge physical paper trail. And, and we do work in the office. We, we, the office is, the town, the top floor of the town office is fully occupied more days than it's not, as of now. In the future, who knows?
I think that helps define us as a community and helps foster a sense of community tremendously. Because if you guys are all working remote, you know, then we're just like a speed bump on the highway, you know? And I think it really brings a lot to it, like Ace brings a lot to it too. You know, might I suggest that when we get to the, toward the end of the bond financing, that's when I think these sort of bigger picture quandary type things, that's where the rubber meets the rug, where we start talking about duration of the financing, and what's the appropriate duration of the bonds would be issued.
Another thing I would say is after, I, working in a space that got remodeled, you know, a handful of years ago, when Alta Ski Area planned that lead building for the administrative offices, they did not take into consideration a bigger department. Like, all the office spaces were built for only like four or five administrative people. We have since like tripled in size. And we have like taken office spaces and put three people in them. We have like a cubicle out there that somebody works out in the middle of like our, where the copier is. And so I'm just saying that that's the other thing that just take into effect. That maybe we're not using all the space now, but we do have to plan that we could use that space, because there's a chance the staffs might get bigger as years go on.
Well.
A little bit, probably not recent, but there is always a chance that like, we might have an IT person, or we might have a person that does a little bit of law work in the office. And, you know, I'm just saying that like, there is a chance, you do have to plan for that, because I will tell you, I work in a space that did not. And that space has been remodeled already five times by contractors.
Well, I think that, I think your tale of whoa also demonstrates something that is known. The pressure on the canyon and numbers of people are only going in one direction. Short of nuclear exchange, this place is gonna be impacted for the long past all of us. And I think this type of, I think we're, we are certainly at a crossroads, but I think we're being prescient in many ways. Whatever we decide will be in the town and community and public's best interest.
I think that with respect to our town building, the lower floor that's leased out is underutilized by
Oh, yeah, for sure. I think it's underutilized. And I know there used to be a, there's a meeting space down there. Do you, how much does that space get used? Because you guys now kind of meet more in what used to be the mayor's office, right? Yeah, that's kind of turned into like a more of a meeting space for everybody.
Yeah, but for a meeting that requires more than, you know, five or, five or six people, you'd need a bigger room and that.
Oh, for sure. No, well, that's what, every one of your slides had this multipurpose space in there. And that's kind of what I keep thinking about is some of this, we do have these meeting spaces that we have yet to kind of utilize.
Right. Julie, I think we're pretty much ready to shift into the, into the breakout. Yes, of course.
I wanted to emphasize what John said, and maybe phrase it even more strongly. To the extent that we go to bond referendum, that's partially financing function. But actually, I think the decision is, do we want to maintain an independent town of Alta? And the reason I'm saying that is couching it that way to the public may make the decision clearer, as opposed to just be about taxes and things like that.
Yeah, it raises the question, is it sustainable?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we all wanna be moving forward with something that we believe is indefinitely sustainable. But if, if it's, if it's not doable, it's not doable.
I hear you, John, but let me just, it's not clear to me that there are significant economies of scale in the capital investment part. Building, building up here costs what building and building costs. I don't think if the county administered it, it would be any better and arguably worse. Maybe there's some on the operational administrative costs, but I don't think that's the issue we're facing right now.
Can I see the last thing on this? I think, I think there's gonna be demand for local public services up here indefinitely. I think there's gonna be justification for us to have a municipality. The only thing I'm concerned about is what happened when the ski, what happens when our sales tax base, if our sales tax base shrinks? Because that's how we fund the local, otherwise property tax is what we have, and we can't have 12 FTEs on property tax alone. Yeah. Okay, the last slide for me. Part of the reason, to have breakouts or not breakouts, or not have breakouts, and we talked about, Council, Julie and I talked about this planning it, there's a ton of value in just getting up and moving around and talking in smaller groups. We want to focus and exercise on priorities. And this is, I removed a priority from what the packet said before, which was long-term continuity of operations. That was a little, I wasn't sure that was gonna make sense to people. And when I talked through it myself, it didn't seem particularly distinct from cost resilience or accessibility. So really what I was thinking about is parking, and where can we reasonably assume to have the most secure parking? So anyways, I'd like to ask you to break out, and have a discussion that Julie will preview a little bit more, sort of guide you on about how to prioritize cost in a project, how to prioritize resilience from natural hazards in a project, and how to prioritize accessibility in a project. And my hope is that these just yield some creative thinking about what the scope of this facility's project is. Does that, does that sound good, Julie?
Sorry.
That's okay. No, that's, that's quite all right.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it from there.
Okay, okay, cool. Jen, you wanna?
No, we just mentioned where some of the groups are.
Okay.
Okay. So what we really thought was, one, one way to be thinking about this, with, given the information that Chris has shared, is really to think about what is your key priority as we move forward. And it does help to define what the outcome will be around the action plan. So what we decided was to offer you time at each area. So here's cost, resilience, and accessibility. And really to think about, what does that mean? How would you describe this? Cost, what's the smallest project this, the town can do that makes sense, right? And, and what would be the strategy for accomplishing that? And then, like, what's that action plan look like? Now, it's quite possible, probable, it'll be some combination of all these things. So this is just a step in the process. But I've, I've got some breakout groups here, and I'd like to give you each, just, it's not a lot of time, it's not enough time at each, at each of these, at, my goodness.
Stations.
Thank you. Stations. But let's have, at A, let's have JB, Molly, Craig, and Mike start here. Let's have Dan, Chris, Brooke, and Carolyn start here. And then at accessibility, let's have Roger, Jen, Elise, and Mark. If you'd like to join, start back here.
Julie, you had the action plan.
There you go.
We have to, you
Yeah, so we're gonna, on this one, what groups started here? Flight marker. Yeah, maybe a present. Talk a little bit about, so some of the key points that you identified, and then each other group just said, and this is really just a couple minutes at each station.
So we, you know, in our conversation, we, I think collectively, we believe that in any scenario, there is no way we get around tearing down the community centers. I mean, that just seems to be given. Yeah, so taking a minimalistic approach to it, we build the smallest, most affordable, purpose-built facility on that site that we can. Yeah, that covers the town's critical responsibilities. That just, that just seemed like, you know, the priority to us. Yeah, there's a strategy, and you know, let's, let's identify what's the smallest we can be, you know, what our, you know, growing pains might look like. You know, what are our opportunities to expand over time, or is this a one-shot deal? You know, we know going into that space, that there's a high likely little partnering with UDA. I think that's great funding strategy, you know, on top of bonds and things like that. I, you know, thanks, Chris, that's underway.
Yeah, we're mostly echoing just what Mike was saying, but coming from a place of executability, that we want to avoid a situation where we work on Taj Mahal kind of building that solves all of our county needs, but that was never buildable, it's never executable because it's too expensive, or it's too big for a piece of land that we own. So I think we're kind of coming at it from a desire, get the ball rolling, and that this is gonna be a process of probably more than build.
And I think finally, you know, we don't want to be, it's all about us at the AMO. You know, there's other, other critical town needs, and we don't want them to be overlooked.
Great. Anything else to add from the other groups?
Can we stop calling it the community center?
Yeah, it's really confusing.
Yeah, because this is
It's very confusing.
Yeah, and you're not Can we just call it the post office? Because we all know the post office is there, and it doesn't
Or you can call it facilities.
Can we just call it the future public safety, Anna?
The J. Edgar Hoover.
I wanted to, I wanted to add, and again, I don't know if this is gonna be cost or more resilience, but after watching the, our building season is very short here. So if we were to demo a community center, whatever building goes there might take two, three summers to build. So while we're doing that, we would need to think about, because we're gonna tear the building down, where are we gonna host the post office? Is kind of one of things, again, this might go back to more resilience. So we want to maintain the services during construction, because that's a big deal. We do have some apartments over in that building as well. Like, if we tear it down, where is that gonna, where are those people gonna go? So a phase approach in my mind, you know, right now, watching them build the ADL, they're building part of it, that part's not gonna get used, but the building still gets to be used. So there's ways to talk about, maybe with our contractors, if, when we get there to phase it, we'll be able to build part of it and then put the post office back in, or we'll be able to build part of it and put, you know, while the construction's happening. And then we just also just kept starring everything on this one, some people others were there. Because it just says, I kind of
Yeah, we, we deconstructed and built our home here in nine months.
Nine, not months?
Nine.
I built our home here for years. I hope they're downed. You remember that?
Yes. So, I mean, it can't, yes, it can't be done in a
I don't think a building this big will be able to be done in one summer.
He's talking about 7,000 square feet, and if it's efficiently built, like, without a lot of stylen, it's a block style.
We'll see.
However it goes. Anyway.
Okay. Any other key points that anyone wants to make here?
One thing that, that I've wanted to bring up earlier, I was curious about, so with our current administration and the Forest Service and all this stuff that seems to be in flux, is it possible to leverage the current administration to do some land swaps now for things that we don't really necessarily know, but we know we want to build on that site, because that's the place we go? Can't we just try and get that land now?
That way, that way it's locked up, whether we action it or not.
I, I think there's, like, maybe there are some policy changes in the Department of Agriculture that make land exchanges easier or more likely. But a big, I think the net impact of this administration on agencies such as the Department of Agriculture, Forest Service, that they have much less administrative bandwidth, because people have retired. And the big hangup with land exchanges is not necessarily the policy, it's the administration of the land exchanges on the forest.
I will tell you that the ski, the ski area and the Forest Service have been doing a lot of discussion about land swapping. So I don't know if that's true. I feel like there is a lot of time to maybe talk about our land that we're not gonna be using, and just saying that, I think it's possible. And some of the legislative in the state is also very open to the land exchanges as well, supporting it. So, I don't know. I feel like there's a lot hot happening right now.
Could be the case, yep.
Okay. Hey. No. Thank you all for that. Thank you all for that. Moving to resilience. Who wants to kick off this discussion, start it here?
Well, I think we started. I think our group started on resilience. We acknowledge that the word, this was mostly intended to cue discussion of what is the project that's resilient to natural hazards and disasters, catastrophic events. But it does also conjure, you know, the questions about what's the long-term value, what's the long-term value of this project with the effect of Carolyn's question about who's gonna use the facility in the, in the future? But also, what is gonna be the most durable, functional space for the town? What's gonna provide the most functional value to the municipality, assuming we have a municipality a couple generations down the road? So, this is all about the site, right? And the best, the site that's least exposed to avalanches is the community center site. It may or may not be less exposed to wildfire, but we, we're pretty confident it's less exposed to avalanches. So, you know, the key strategic decision to make if we're prioritizing resilience is to focus on that site if we're all hanging in that direction anyways.
Okay. Anybody else want to chime in on this one?
I think we just, we were just talking about, like, when you make a this, I think when we finally make the decision about AMO and where it's gonna go, that's gonna kind of trickle. Obviously, it seems like all the.
It'll drive.
Yeah, it seems like, oh, everybody keeps talking about putting it by the community current, we'll call it South Community Center, the post office building. But then it'll kind of start driving some of the other stuff that we need to make a decision on.
I think we were coming out of further point of view of, of all the three, we viewed resilience as a really important service, or that our constituents depend on us to be resilient and to be able to handle, you know, the big snow year and the big avalanche cycle and what have you, and continue to function as a town, continue to have law enforcement. And, and that's, we voted this one pretty high. I'm not sure it was number one, but it was either number one or number two of us, except accessibility.
One or three of them.
So.
Regardless, regardless of resilience and people, you know, pointing to the, where the current post office location for future, you know, investments. I think, and listening to the discussion here this morning as well about the property we have acquired, say that's an obvious failure. And I think you should look to say, if we're gonna discuss swaps and people think that there are other state, local, and federal entities that are willing to consider those possibilities, then I think you should take a higher level view on where would be a best spot for the infrastructure you need. Because reality-wise, the location of the post office is basically already de facto in the road right way. It is, in fact, in the road right way, a substantial portion of that building. And then if you look down the road and think back to what your long-term transportation needs are, that's a poor location depending on what you think is in the future. And that you should, if you're gonna consider a swap, and I would, I would say that both the feds and the state are, have a high, much higher desire to swap these days despite some of the constraints that previously occurred. And that is, and why that is, from the impetus from both the state and the feds, is that it's a good idea. And that's why they're willing to consider it.
Yeah.
One of the things that we did was we added dispatch in there because in terms of resilience, the number one thing that you want to make sure is that your communications stay intact.
Right, absolutely. Yes, dispatch burns down. Those guys can go for a short period of time.
It's also so reassuring for the public to be able to call dispatch and actually get a human being who's in Alta.
24 hours, eight days.
Yeah. Right.
Okay. All right, now, we started here.
And this kind of goes back to, this kicks, that dispatch just kicks us off over, something that we, so I know we keep talking about accessibility for public. That's like, obviously something that we all agree needs to happen for AMO and some other services. But for me, this was also, I know employee accessibility is a big deal. I think, you know, as Jen said, that we've been lucky that we haven't had an employee with a broken leg needing to get to work. Some of our town staff can work a couple days remotely. A dispatcher with a broken leg cannot work remote. They have to be able to get to their building. So that was the other thing for me that I kind of think about for accessibility that I probably haven't been thinking about a little bit more with all this stuff, is we keep talking about how dispatch maybe doesn't need to be close to the road. But in some ways, employees need to be able to get to the building. And in the winter time, I don't know if somebody on crutches with a broken leg can get to the building and dispatch.
It stresses me out. It happens, but it stresses me out.
I know, you've been there. And there are ways to, like, maybe snowmobile up to the building and move them up there and there's some, but it's just something to think about.
Every four years, a dispatcher is on crutches.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's just, it's just something that I think for accessibility to keep in mind. And then also just some of the town staff, like Jen made a really good point, it's not currently how much the public currently need to get to the town staff, but how much does the town services at our administration building does need to be accessible, I think is a little bit more, you know, way to think about accessibility as well. Is it accessible, not how often? Yeah, not how often it's currently accessible, but is it accessible? Because that's what it always comes down to down there, down the road with someone that needs to get to a building.
Yeah. No, thanks.
I think accessibility is really important and, you know, this obviously had a lot to do with me deciding not to continue in the election is because I didn't see myself being able to get to the office building comfortably during storms. But how much of that could be dealt with with a grading project or some heated stairs or some solution that doesn't require a new building? It seems like, you know, we're, you know, we're just taking out the big guns to address this issue. Accessibility really starts with, you know, eliminating, you know, small hazards along the way. And then when you talk about the snowmobile aspect, you know, the radiant stairs down from the, from the post office all the way to the road is not that big a project really. And it would also service this building and allow radiant heat and access throughout the winter. So I mean, I think there are some other ways we could handle accessibility in a more affordable manner, potentially.
I think the point about an admin staff being more capable of working remotely.
For just maybe a couple days.
Test fit two moves admin over there because it's a public business function. I also think about staff. It is a great point that admin staff are most equipped to work from home without loss of productivity or effectiveness. So that's just, that's just something I hadn't appreciated when we think about who needs to be roadside.
That's kind of like my HR hat for the ski area, because I know that, like, when we have employee issues, anybody that has a desk job, we can accommodate a lot easier than anyone that has to work out on the hill or anyone that has to be more of a central function that has to walk over snow. It's something that we're constantly, like, dealing in HR. Like if somebody has an ACL injury, sometimes their doctors do not approve of them to walk on snow.
Right.
And so you have to kind of, as an employer, decide, is that person gonna have to not work at all? Or are we gonna try to accommodate them in some way so that they can get their job done? And so that's kind of where I just thought about it was dispatch, I didn't think about it. Our dispatchers can't go and do dispatch from home, or they can't go and dispatch all of a sudden from another building. Like dispatch center is where dispatch center happens to be at. So that's just something that I just kind of didn't think about until we stood here.
And not everyone necessarily on the staff has to be expalable to the public. The public has to have access to the functions of the town, not necessarily 100% of the four staff members we have now. So you don't necessarily need to move everybody in there. The one thing I would say, when I look at this whole thing, and I go back 20 months ago, and the first thing you put together, Chris, when you did the first retreat, we are much further down the road than we think we are. We're making very good decisions, we're prioritizing things, we're weighing out pluses and minuses, and is advancing this whole process significantly. I just think we've made a lot more progress than, than we can see while we're standing in the forest.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice, nice observation on progress.
So, yeah, to wrap up, last couple.
Can I just say something about accessibility? There you go. What function that the town provides is most visited by the public? It's a P O, right? So I would say that in terms of prioritizing accessibility, that's gotta be a number one.
Something that came up that had nothing to do with accessibility, but was a reaction to the sequencing of one, two, three, or two points. One is, the sequencing should probably be planning, finalize plans, then funding. It's much better if we go to the public with, we know what we're gonna do, rather than, and ask them to finance that, rather than give us a bunch of money, we'll figure out later.
Yeah.
The second thing, which I think is very realistic, is that there's enough planning to do that, assuming we need a bond issuance in order to finance stuff, we're probably not gonna make it by November 26th. So we're probably talking about, this is assuming bond issuance has to be, elections have to actually be in November. So I, I think we're looking at more than years' planning time in order to finalize the plan.
Okay. There.
And I really like Mark's comment. Like, are we really, like, we all look at it like, oh, gonna tear down the post office? But is there an alternative where we could keep all the functions that Elise is concerned about running while we do, yeah, long construction?
I mean, well, when you think about the post office, though, like, if, let's say we tear the building down and we are looking at a two-year project.
Yeah.
We don't have a roadside spot to put a post office. We may have to ask a private partner in town, like one of the lodges or somebody to host the post office for us.
Or put up a trailer.
Maybe, but it, but it's just something that we do need to think about while we plan.
Two years of planning.
Well, and now that we own this building, that changes the game, accessibility to that building in different ways. There's, I've got all sorts of ideas in my head, but I don't know what's actually feasible. But there's, I mean, it could be radiant heating stairs just directly to the building. It could be a little skylock, skywalk, like Snowbird built, you know? There's all sorts of ways that we could actually make that more accessible, but the post office.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, this, this building's actually not that accessible.
Not right now, but if we were redoing the patio and we're putting in a graded wheelchair accessible ramp.
Okay, I think we're done. Everyone's breaking out. Okay.
But I think keeping the public involved is an important part of.
Okay, again, one last, one last thing before we take a really short break. I'd like to know what the groups thought as each of you walked around and prioritized, where do you stand as far as A, B, C, or what combination works for you? So just a spokesperson from each group.
Maybe, what?
What do you think is the prioritization effort to take into account as you think about this planning process and all that needs to be done around capital facilities?
I think for me, it's B, B, C, and A, is how I would order this.
In that order?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just say, in terms of the big picture, long-term, you have to go to, what are we gonna build and make it accessible? The resilience and cost are gonna come after that in no particular order.
Okay, fair. What other group has to weigh in? Okay.
I, you know, I just think that you could shovel away, you can see around and probably defend yourself smartly, in the light of the lights. But I think, you know, it's, it's about, we need to nail down what is within the sphere of our influence. You know, know what we can potentially do and fight accordingly.
I think the end is dovetailing on Mike's comment there. I think our, our sense was that all three of these are so critical that we can't move forward without all good solutions on all three of these accounts.
And all, yeah.
So like.
Yeah.
I think this is the, this is the one that we can, we can get around our budget and our means to finance, and we can't get around accessibility challenges. We're gonna have cost constraints and accessibility challenges, but I do think we can solve the resilience problem.
Yes, good thinking, good ideas.
Yeah.
Okay.
And concrete.
Thank you all. Good job. We're gonna take a super short break, five minutes, and then we'll start.
Okay, so most of the, the content I'm gonna talk through is even more redundant to this group than, than the slides we reviewed in the first part of the meeting. But it is, of course, it's, this is really the, the key context for, it's the foundation for how are we gonna raise money? How much money do we need to raise? And how are we going to raise it? So I'm just gonna walk through a couple snapshots of our fiscal year '26 budget and our capital projects plan. I'm gonna mention in cursory fashion, other options that we have to raise revenues, mostly ongoing revenues for funding operations. But of course, how much money we need to borrow is related to how much money it takes to operate the organization. So we won't get too deep into that because we have some public finance experts here today, Mark Anderson and Jeanette Harris from Zion's Public Finance Incorporated, to talk about how municipalities borrow money. And then we're gonna wrap up with, we're not gonna do another breakout, but we're just gonna have a roundtable discussion about direction to staff, what more, what does the council need to know about and discuss next, and other key takeaways from today. Next slide. Okay, so, general fund revenues for this year, just about 3.1 million in revenue is what we project. 56% sales tax even subsequent to our truth and taxation decision to raise property taxes for the year. So that, even, even with that truth and taxation property tax increase, we're only 15% funded by property tax. Next slide. Revenues. A key highlight here for this year is that we are projecting more expenses than we are revenues. So, you know, we've discussed at length over the last couple years, starting to sort of vary from that long-held strategy of maintaining 100%, you know, of a year's operating revenue in our general fund. So we're set to dip below that this year, sort of by design, I think, for the first time in at least the last little while. The town is mostly staff, we all know that. It's not quite half Alta Marshall's office staff. Mike might sort of take umbrage a little bit that we don't call out staff on the admin side, but of course, admin time is, makes up a substantial portion of everything that's under government administration, some of the Alta Justice Court and Landuson planning. So yes, the police department obviously is a little more than half the town's budget. And then, you know, there are a variety of other expenses that we cover at the town. Transportation is a pretty, pretty big item. It's the third biggest line item here. A great deal of that is funding for the shuttle. And that, of course, that, that is comprised of our general fund, our contribution to the program, and then all the revenue we take in from other sources to fund that shuttle Okay. High-level snapshot of the capital projects plans for the capital projects fund, the water and the sewer fund. We've been doing a better job at projecting out year expenses. We're much further along in that, in the water and sewer funds. We know that we have a bunch of expensive projects to do in the water and sewer systems out of their respective funds to, to cause the water system to provide the fire flows that are required and the storage. And then the sewer system is remarkably functional and resilient for 55-year-old pipe. But we, we are starting to project some projects to maintain and replace both the water sewer, water system and the sewer system. So, yeah, our, our known outlook for capital projects is $10.6 million, and that includes a very high-level stab at a. and that includes a very high-level stab at a budget for a new building, we'll talk about more in a second. These water and sewer fund capital projects totals are more than half the figures on the, in the column on the right-hand side on the top row there, and those are the, the high-level, planning-level costs to replace all of the existing infrastructure. And we've not begun to program that out, we are not funding that deliberately in the actual fund budgets. Our capital projects planned are, you know, essentially aspirational at this point. But we do have the figures because we hired some engineers to help us produce them, which is a step forward. So, this is where we show capital projects expenses to fund a new building. This is the, the capital projects plan. We've not shown many out-year expenses on this, this plan in the past, and I, I think I've, this has occurred to me recently, perhaps it is a lack of planning, but I also think, I think a big part of this is that we've assumed now for, like, twenty years, that we're gonna tear down a building and replace it. So, why, you know, replace the bumper on your fifteen-year-old Subaru when you're just, you really just ought to buy a new Subaru? So, I think that's, that's part of why we haven't programmed out expenses on our buildings too much in the past. We do have one million, one-point-two million, if you round up, of capital expenses in F I twenty-six, and the bulk of that is the purchase of this building that, that we're now in. So, other than that, we have the same kind of equipment and small, small work on facilities for the Marshals' office and the administration that we typically do in a county.
I would say, the, the, the seemingly thing for me is that in this fund, after the current fiscal, there's really very little else on the horizon to focus on, other than build a new building. So, I think, you know, the time is right, because there's a real opportunity in the planning process, and there aren't a lot of other conflicting funding requirements within this fund. It's a great time to design and build a new building, as far as the general fund, CapEx fund is concerned.
So, that, that nine-million-dollar number, it is not specific to a project, we haven't made a decision. Just for the camera and the recording, no decisions have been made about what the project is, how much it's gonna cost, or how we're gonna pay for it. The way it is represented in the plan shows three million dollars annually for three years, starting in fiscal year twenty-eight, and we can't raise that revenue on our current revenue structure. We just can't, obviously, right? The water and sewer projects and the water and sewer plans, we're not, this, we're not scratching, we're barely scratching the surface on this today. Funding those, the way they're set forth in the plan, not to mention replacement, is gonna require significant rate increases, or some other mechanism, but as of now, you know, all we've contemplated with any formality is essentially raising rates ten or so percent a year for the next several years.
Make two quick comments about that?
Yeah.
I think that the water and sewer fund, which I spent a lot of time thinking about, I think that we don't need to make it harder on ourselves, any harder on ourselves, it's already a pretty big lift tackling this stream of projects over time. So, I would recommend that we, A, consider lengthening out the time horizon to maybe ten to twelve years, to just give us a little more time for the rate increase approach to work. When you start to try to stuff it back into six or seven years, then the rate increases are gonna be north of twenty percent. If you extend the time, the timeline, that, that's gonna help take pressure off the rate increases, so that would make sense to me. And then, some of them, particularly the water fund, I think very much, the way the projects lay out, and you look at the location of the various projects and stuff, is I think that very much, we should develop a phased approach around which two or three projects is it gonna make sense to work on at the same time, and shoot for that funding up.
I think that sounds right on. Okay. Well, what we fund out of the general fund, and to a lesser extent, water and sewer fund is mostly staff. The biggest opportunity I think we have, without substantially redesigning the administration to save money, it, from the general fund, is by defunding the shuttle, essentially, or finding another, if not defunding, then finding another source of revenue for that shuttle. And there are some opportunities that may be unique to the shuttle to do that. So, I, you know, I think we all generally understand the next steps, we need to refine our concept for the new building. Yes?
On that note, listening to the discussion, defunding the shuttle makes sense, I think can go to the neighbors, others, the county, to kick-ups, to the people that are renting properties, to pick up the funding on the shuttle. The other biggest thing that's gonna help turn around the municipal property tax budget for the long haul, is the fact that the vast majority of the property in town is presently assessed, assessed by the state tax commission, and those revenues go to the state. If you look at your, quote, peers, whether it's in, merely in the state of Utah, or the Wasatch Front, they have all petitioned the state tax commission to have the county assessor assess the state, the properties that are currently taxed by the state tax commission because they're mining claims. This is common, this is commonplace, all up and down the Wasatch Front. And I would note that, you know, I have previously noted to Mr. Maun that I was gonna advocate for this, and it's less than popular with property owners, because when they're holding PAC bid mining claims, and they're assessed by the state, generally, the, the notion has been, well, the state undervalues them because it's a different use, and they're, you pay less property tax. And, you know, that's all been going on, that's gonna be the biggest thing that's gonna turn around your long-term.
We're not, like, I think we can get into this a little bit on, on the next slide, let's go to the next slide. I think you're talking about growing the base, right?
The debt base.
Yeah, increasing the tax base. So, option to raise revenues. I didn't even put that on the slide, but, right, how do we grow the tax base? Economic development, summer economic development, property value increases, there's a note in the Zions Bank slides that I had not considered with regard to, the actual tax impacts decrease from under a bond. I think maybe we can talk a little bit more about that, because property values go up and anyways. Okay, so, grow the base. We've never, we've thought about it a lot, but we haven't really tried. Some, some choices to make, you know, are we gonna save up, and, and either pay as we go, or save up to build a building? I think we're all of the mind that we don't have time to do that, you know, short of some, you know, magic hand-of-God funding mechanism coming our way in the next, like, twelve months, which is probably not short of borrowing some money, or getting a big grant or donation. We do have, we, we, we do still have the one percent local option transient room tax out there that we, we've not levied, and, you know, we can decide to levy that to free up, fund, you know, current general fund monies that are otherwise appropriated now. We can increase the town's municipal property tax, either by, you know, raising it the way we just did. A general obligation bond is typically more or less a property tax increase. Water and sewer rates, I think you're right on, John, that we really need to think carefully about the, the frequency of those projects. There are, there is some potential for modest revenue increases in business license fees and building permit fees. I do think there's, there's some potential that we could fund the shuttle through disproportionate impact type business license fee, because I know that's done elsewhere in the state, but that's a, that's a tricky subject. And then, of course, we can cut expenses by, you know, pursuing administrative efficiencies. Craig said, "As you like," I thought that was a great way to put that in his slides from January. But obviously, when times are tough, we will need to cut expenses, and we'll just have to face the music on that when we get there.
Chris, can I point out something about the shuttle?
Yes.
Because he keeps coming up. Just to be clear, the town is not funding a hundred percent of the shuttle, right? Just wanna make sure everybody's clear on that.
Does the Snowbird contribute anything to the shuttle?
Um...
Okay. As, as I didn't hear.
The, the night shuttle, I think, right?
Oh, they just, they just make ten grand.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, but property owners, businesses, sea area, off the top, I wanna say, it's, we, we pay...
We pay about a hundred.
Yeah, it's about a hundred, twenty-five.
Yeah, we, we don't cover half of it. That's a lot more than we were putting into it three years ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
UTA puts in fifty K.
Right, so, the next biggest.
But, right, that's always a discussion.
I want to say something about the transient room tax. Because, like, I have been a big proponent of doing the transient room tax, and I've been on the council for a while, but, like, this one percent, heart, I'm a big proponent of it. But, I don't know why we haven't done it yet. I will tell you that every community around us that has leveraged it, why we're not doing it, I don't know. I also wanna say that I feel that our, whatever we're gonna do moving forward is gonna be several things. I don't think there's just gonna be, pick one option. I think it's gonna be like transient room tax, obviously, we're gonna maybe do something with borrowing, and, you know, what we talked about with the water and sewer rates, but I think it's gonna be a combination of things, but I am a big proponent of doing the one percent transient room tax, and that is something we can do right now.
How much does that turn into, how many dollars should that turn into?
Yeah, that's about two-hundred grand.
That was my conservative number, it's pretty impossible to guess.
Whether we decide to, like, start saving now, or start using something to, like, reduce expenses, or, I feel like the transient room tax is something we, we can literally do it now, where some of this other stuff is gonna take us time to figure out. The borrowing is gonna take us time, some other stuff are gonna take us time, but that we can implement now, but we have not done it yet, that's what I'm gonna say.
You had me at TRT.
You gotta think about the order of magnitude, though, you know, the, I'll offer them the tax, and we largely haven't done it because there's so much large pushback every time you anchor with their structure. But, you know, the balance of revenue and less expenses went six-hundred thousand dollars against us over the last two years. So, we went from having a modest surplus to, you know, this past year, we had a small deficit, and there wouldn't have been any CapEx transfer if there hadn't been these reserve funds, and now, this year, we're gonna be three or four hundred grand in the hole, on our, just our basic equation of the general fund. So, you know, that's moving pretty swiftly. Current is moving swiftly against us, so, we need to take action, and I think it needs to be able to scale, and it's gonna have a meaningful impact.
The other thing that frustrates me is that the biggest growth item in this town is summer visitation, and there, we have no way of extracting any...
Testology.
Yeah.
Which is minimal, because they don't do it.
Because most of it is they use, and yet, it consumes services, particularly AMO. So, we're, that's frustrating, but I don't know what to do about it.
Snow Pine's doing three-week weddings in a weekend.
But, transient room tax, people are staying there.
I think we should put that on for next week.
I don't know if the Forest Service campground would apply to this, but you can also do a transient room tax on campgrounds. Forest Service might be different, but I'm just saying that you can, we have it in the basin, our marshals do patrol up there. And the reason I keep talking about the transient room tax, and I know Maury's over here clapping his hands, but the people that come and stay here, like, how many people broke in or lodge from the lodges last year that the marshals had to deal with? They were lodge guests, and so, that's kind of what it's like, this transient room tax thing, I know I keep beating it down, but I'm like, why have we not done this yet?
Let's make it two percent. And then, that way, we save our money.
You touched on it briefly, the revenue aspect going against us, too, that means I guess that's three-hundred thousand bucks. And, you know, in the long run, Mike keeps saying, yeah, we're good, you see, there's shift in migration to the less expensive path project, products, a lot of those, we're not getting sales tax on the redemption by the ICA pass or whatever.
Are we getting screwed there?
And, and that's, I think, a long-term thing that is, would really change the dynamic, because you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yes.
So, that's, that could work addressing.
Okay, I think we need to pivot to our keynote. I know I didn't ask you to do a keynote. Grants and philanthropy, they're out there. Oh, I'll, I'll leave that there for now, we could talk about it more in the future. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Mark Anderson and Jeanette Harris from Zions Bank Public Finance, and these guys will, they've, you've got some slides that you may have been able to review, we'll talk through them, there's a lot of information on these slides, it's heavily geared towards essentially debt financing and different ways to arrange that. Zions Bank, of course, is in the bond market, and they, they serve as municipal advisors, so, if we decide to pursue a bond issuance or some other kind of debt financing, we, we could engage Zions Public Finance as a municipal advisor. We are gonna need to have a municipal advisor, and Zions Bank is a potential vendor of those services to us. So, yeah, see, with that, you guys take away me, Julie just...
Could note, we will need to just extend our meeting by about fifteen minutes or so, so, I know lunch is gonna come, and, you know, we can decide if you guys wanna start before we finish, but we'll plan meeting till at least twelve-thirteen. Okay.
Thank you.
Then you.
Well, I'm Mark Anderson, it's certainly a pleasure to be with the Alta Town Council today, and it's, we appreciate the opportunity to, to share some of our expertise on financing municipal projects. I'll introduce myself, then I'll let Jeanette introduce herself. I've been with Zions Public Finance for about a little over seven years. I have a degree in accounting, I'm a CPA, and prior to working for Zions, I was the city manager in Heber for twenty years, and the finance director for eight years prior to that. So, I've, I've lived in your shoes, and I know what it's like to run a municipal government, and understand some of the challenges that you face funding projects. I'm gonna let Jeanette introduce herself, and we'll kind of tag-team through this presentation.
Great, yeah, my name is Jeanette Harris. I have been with Zions Public Finance about fifteen years, and before that, I was with a different investment banking firm for about five years. I have worked in the, kind of, the whole gamut of, kind of, the municipal spectrum, doing both consulting and on the bond side. My degree is in economics, so I also did some economic consulting, I actually did some consulting for Alta years and years ago, so I'm really happy to be back with you guys again. So, I have worked with pretty much almost every, not every, but probably eighty percent of the municipalities in the state, and so, really grateful here to be with you guys. Happy to answer any questions you have.
I remember when you came.
Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Zions has done our business license studies, and they did a...
That's what it was, it was the business license.
Jeanette did our waste management study. I wasn't sure I wanted to...
Years ago, yeah, he wasn't sure, he wanted to bring that one up, but...
So, let's just talk about ways that public fin, projects are financed, go ahead. So, as Chris talked about earlier, we can save up and set aside, we can pay as we go, we can seek out grant or philanthropy, philanthropic donations, or we can use debt, or a combination of any of those to fund projects, go ahead. So, each of these methods have different pros and cons. The pay, the advantage of doing, doing pay-as-you-go is you don't have to pay interest, but sometimes it takes a long time to complete a project, and, you know, most recently, we've seen inflation costs rising so rapidly that the cost of inflation is much worse than the cost of capital. And so, if you can fix your, your borrowing rate and do a project sooner, there's, we've seen it advantageous to do that, if you have the revenue streams to make the debt service Save up and set aside usually takes a long time, but you don't have to pay interest. You can earn interest on the monies that you have saved, but you're still subject to the risks of inflation. And some projects just really can't be done, pay as you go, a piece at a time, you can't, it's hard to build a new city facility, you know, over a ten-year period, it's not practical. you know, over a 10-year period, it's not practical. Uh, grants, uh, are great, but they're, uh, we find very hard to come by. And, uh, if you do obtain a grant, chances are there are some strings attached to that, to you have to comply with, and, uh, sometimes it's difficult to go through the, uh, qualification process. Uh, we think debt financing does the best job of matching the, uh, the people who use the project and the people who pay for projects. If you save up for 20 years and build a project, the people that have been paying for the last 20 years may not be the ultimate beneficiaries of the project. It allows you to complete the project immediately, uh, but it does require you to pay interest. So, next slide. So municipal bonds are basically IOUs, where you, uh, borrow money from a lender, and use the, uh, use those, uh, proceeds to construct a project, and in turn you make bond payments back to the investors that purchased your bonds. And if you have questions along the way, uh, feel free. Uh, there are several different types of bonds that can be issued, I'm gonna focus more on, uh, probably the top four on that list. Unlimited tax general obligation, that's a GO bond, that requires voter, voter approval, and, uh, it gives this town the right to increase property taxes, uh, sufficient to make the debt service payments on an annual basis over the life of the bond. Typically, we see, uh, GO bonds issued for a 20-year period. Uh, utility revenue, uh, bonds, uh, just required a resolution by the elected body, and you would typically pledge the net revenues of the system which you're making improvements on, whether it be water, or sewer, or storm drain. And, uh, usually there's coverage requirements that Jeanette will talk about, so that you can guarantee that you have adequate funds to make the debt service payments. Excise tax revenues, uh, examples of those are sales tax, franchise tax, classy road funds, uh, sales tax probably being the most popular. And it just requires a resolution of the town council to, uh, issue a, uh, an excise tax bond. Lease revenues slash capital lease is where, uh, the asset that's being constructed or purchased is the collateral for the bond. There, there's not a, a rate covenant that, uh, or a covenant from the taxpayer saying that they agree to have the property taxes increased sufficient to make the debt service payments. Uh, and those types of lease are subject to annual appropriation. You can say, I don't want to continue making payments on this, but the consequences are you lose the asset, and it, it's, uh, not good for your credit long-term. So it's not a, a road I, we would encourage anybody to go down, uh, defaulting on a, a, a lease revenue bond. A special assessment are typically, uh, where, uh, an improvement is being made within a specific area of the community, and the taxpayers that benefit from that improvement, a, a majority of those, 60% plus, agree to be assessed, for their proportionate, uh, uh, benefit. And, uh, uh, sometimes these are, uh, assessed with your property taxes, and sometimes, uh, separately through another mechanism. The, the value of the improvement has to be at least three times the value, I mean, the value of the improved property that are being assessed has to be at least three times the value of the, uh, ma, amount of money that's going to be borrowed. Uh, tax increment, those are, uh, tax increments usually generated when RDAs are created, where you have a base value in property taxes, and you're going to do something to.
RDAs, read on the.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's fair.
I, sometimes I forget my audience. Uh, you have a base taxable value, and you're gonna do something to, uh, to incentivize new development, and as your taxable, tax base increases based on new development that occurs, some of that property tax is cap, the new property tax is captured, uh, and comes backs to the, comes back to the redevelopment agency that can, in some cases, could be used for debt service. Limited tax general obligation is, what we're seeing most of that is with public infrastructure districts, where if a public infrastructure district is created, it's usually done by a developer with the idea of trying to get access to less expensive capital, because they can issue tax exempted bonds for, uh, municipal, uh, facilities, roads, water, sewer, et cetera. And the people that, uh, you know, the benefited area, uh, agrees to be subject to a property tax that can be up to 15 mils. And, uh, uh, probably not something I would expect Alta Town to do. We, we have seen some government entities issue public infrastructure district bonds that are not development related, or that are development related, like Point of the Mountain Authority and, uh, yeah, yeah, Utah Indian Port. Uh, lastly, uh, some entities, uh, are very tax dependent, say fire districts that may have their only source of revenue is property taxes. So sometimes they issue tax anticipation notes that, uh, say, we're gonna borrow money in July because we know, we don't have enough cash to make it through the full fiscal year, uh, but well, when our property taxes come in, we'll pay it off. So it's usually a short-term note, and, and you can do that with, uh, other revenue sources, other property taxes as well. But all those other, uh, other than the general obligation bond, all those other, uh, types of bonds can be issued by a resolution adopted by the town council. Next slide. So advantages to holding a general obligation bond election, and, and some of these comments about interest rates relate primarily to the public market, in that, uh, they provide the lowest interest rate because the, the guarantee for the repayment is so strong, where the property owners have agreed to have their property taxes increased, uh, an amount sufficient to make the debt payments. Uh, it doesn't impact town revenues, because it's a new source of revenue that comes from the implementation of the tax, for the bond only. Uh, and as the value of the town's, uh, the town's taxable value increases, the impact to individual ta, taxpayers would decline. If you're in a fast-growing community, you could see your, that burden go down fairly quickly. If you're in a pretty stagnant, it wouldn't probably change much. It allows voter input, which, uh, is a double-edged sword sometimes. Uh, disadvantages to holding a GO bond election, uh, you can only hold a bond election once a, a year, which increases your, your interest rate risk. If you have to wait till November of every year, and you may be in an environment where interest rates are rising, appear to be rising rapidly, to have to wait may cost you a higher interest rate. They are hard to pass, uh, and if they fail, and you still have, the, the town still feels a need to complete the project, then you may lose some favor with the citizens if you figure out another way to, if you just raise property taxes, or some other, uh, method to generate the revenue you need to, to do the needed project. And as I said, uh, it also allows voter input, which is, uh, which I'd say is a double-edged sword. So, next slide, please. So, uh, what's that? This, this is something that, uh, the, uh, person that was the head of our office generated, uh, four or five years ago, based on 20-plus years of experience working with communities on general, uh, uh, GO bonds. And, uh, that is, to, to be successful to pass a GO bond, you need to have unified support from the council. If you're divided, uh, it's hard, these are hard enough to pass as it is, but if you're divided as a council, it's gonna be very difficult to pass. And you need to be able to make sure the voters understand what the need is, and if, if you're not being able to communicate that, you need to communicate until they at least understand. They may not agree, but at least they understand the logic behind what you're trying to accomplish. And if you have critics, you know, bring them in early, help them understand the project as well. And, uh, uh, oftentimes, as financial advisors on, on projects, we bring in the Utah State Tax, I mean, the Utah Taxpayers Association, and, and sit down with the, the community and say, this is, this is our project, and this is why we're doing this. And it, as they become more informed, they're less likely to be a critic of your project. Uh, campaign within legal constraints, you know, this, the community's, uh, prohibited from spending funds to promote the election, uh, but there are ways you can educate, uh, along the process. And, and I, in a minute, I'll talk about, I think, a successful campaign that took place close by here last year. Uh, the higher the tax impact, the less, the more difficult it is to pass. And then lastly, uh, I, I think our mantra is, if we're, to successfully pass a, a GO bond, you need to, uh, be able to establish a need, provide a reasonable solution, and propose a reasonable cost. And, uh, so let me, let me talk about, uh, two bond elections that I was involved in last year. One being Midway City Open Space Bond for $5 million. Tax impact wasn't very big, and it was the second of, uh, $5 million GO bond that they passed for open space preservation. They have a pretty decent tax base, and, and this, the city, uh, had shown, uh, that they were good stewards with the first $5 million, and the citizens, uh, liked what was happening, and voted to support the second round of that. But, uh, the next one was Cottonwood Heights. Cottonwood Heights, uh, has a vision for a community, uh, gathering spot, they're calling the Heights. And, and, uh, they, uh, were able to get, pass a $30 million bond with a 30-year, uh, term on it, which usually we don't see terms that long, and, uh, I, I would say that Cottonwood Heights did all of those last steps very well. I, as a financial advisor, I wasn't real optimistic that it was gonna be able to pass, but the community, uh, got the support, and, and essentially, each person that voted for that, or each, each household, has agreed to pay about $5,000 over the next 30 years for this, uh, community.
That's essentially mixed-use commercial development, but some civic components.
Yes.
Commercial residential and, uh.
We helped them with the purchase of the old Ream store that had been abandoned, that 10-acre site. And then, the, the vision was to have a, a public-private, you know, have some restaurants and, uh, maybe high-density housing, parking structure, et cetera. And they were able to create a, a committee within the community, create the vision, and, and made many opportunities to educate the, uh, the community along the way. So, uh, uh, if you, if you want to see a good example of, of putting those steps into place, I think Cottonwood Heights is a good example of that. I don't, you know, I don't work with Milcrick, I don't know if they passed a GO bond or not.
I'm not sure.
I, I don't know. But, uh, bond election timelines, and this is high level, and it, this is, this is the steps that, that, uh, from the 2024. But basically, uh, if you want to hold a GO bond election, the council needs to adopt a resolution, uh, elect, a bond election resolution by approximately mid-August, if you want to be on the November ballot. Uh, you have to submit a copy of that to the Lieutenant Governor's Office. You need to hold a public hearing to discuss the town's intent to issue bonds. Uh, if eligible voters want to put an argument against the issuance of the bond, they have to do so 65 days before the election. The governing body has to put together a, uh, educational, uh, I guess, a pro, uh, I mean, argument in favor of the ballot proposition, why they're proposing it. And then if there is, uh, someone that wants to put a, a argument against, then you can, uh, rebut each one's comments. In both cases that I talked about last year, neither one had anyone that submitted an argument against.
Can I ask a question, because I don't understand this a little bit? So, is the election, like, everybody that's an eligible voter elects? Or is it just the property owners that, uh, have the election?
It's all the registered voters within the community.
Yes, sir. In the, uh, just the mechanics of it a little bit, because we're, you know, we're thinking about like, we've actually been building the building. Do you, do we draw down the money as we need it, and the construction bills come due? Or do you say, here's your money, and then we're spending it over the next six to nine months, and, and we're paying you interest on the money during that time? Or do you have like a construction portion or facility?
I would say normally, the bonds are issued in their entirety if the project is going to, you know, commence. And then, uh, the bond proceeds are typically held by a trustee that reinvests them under your direction, but typically that's with the state treasurer's office, which is earning, you know, 4.3 or 4% interest right now.
Oh, so, a similar rate to the rate that you're paying? So it's not a big negative arbitrage?
There's not a big difference right now.
Yeah.
So, um, so Cottonwood Heights, they borrowed 20 million. Some of their bonds had to be issued taxable because of the private benefit that they anticipate. And we really haven't, the project's not so mature that we know exactly how that final allocation of, of public versus private benefits is gonna work out, so we issued $20 million, uh, in May, and the other $10 million will be issued when they're further along with their, uh, development partner.
But Zions issued the money.
We, uh, we took them to the public market, which means we, you know, uh, Jeanette drafted the official statement that goes out, uh, with the public offering, and, uh, we sold, uh, hired an underwriter, and, uh, well, we sold the bonds competitively in the public market.
So we won't worry so much about the time and lag of spending the money versus the issue, it's because our reinvestment rate will be similar, or potentially even higher than the rate we're paying?
Correct, I mean, uh, bonds issued in 2020, 20, 2020 to 2022 have some real positive arbitrage problems if they haven't been spent right now. Because, you know, I issued a bond at 1.36% for a school district in Kane County in 2020, so, um, but if you spend the, the proceeds fast enough, you don't have, there's spend-down tests that you don't have to pay the arbitrage back to the IRS. So, um, let's see. You have to send voter information pamphlets to each household, uh, you have to post the arguments on the state voter information website, the town website, and the town newsletter. And then the governing body needs to hold a public hearing between four and 45 days before the election, and then the election is held the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, and then you have to canvass the election within the next 14, seven to 14 days. But I think probably the most important thing for you to know right now is, if we want to do this, you need to be ready by August.
Yeah.
Jen, how many registered voters do we have right now?
Under cookie.
So, um, I'm gonna let Jeanette take it from here for right now.
Okay, so are there any more questions, though, before I move on? Okay, great, so I, the next couple of slides, I'm just gonna talk to you in just a little bit more detail about the types of bonds that Mark introduced you to. So, he talked about utility revenue bonds, so that would be a sewer revenue bond, or a water revenue bond. And with a utility revenue bond, what you're doing is pledging your utility revenue. And with a utility revenue bond, what you're doing is pledging your utility revenues. So a sewer revenue bond, you're saying, our pledge is whatever revenues that we get from our sewer fees. So Mark talked to you about interest rates a little bit. So with the general obligation bond, you're going to get the highest rating and you're going to get the lowest interest rate. Because basically, you are saying, we will do whatever it takes to make these payments. Even if we have to charge a 50% property tax, we're going to make payments on the bond. With a utility revenue bond, you're not saying that. You're saying, look, here's what we're currently charging for our sewer fees. Usually you'll say, here's what we've charged in the last couple of years. We're planning on increasing them every year, whatever. Here's our revenues. They're a good source, they're a good source of revenue. Here's what we're pledging. And so your interest rates will be based on the type of pledge that you make. In addition to that, you need to say, our revenues not only cover our expenses, they cover more than our expenses. So with the utility bond, it has to be a 1.25 coverage, which means you need to be bringing in 125% of whatever your debt service is, okay?
After making operating expenses.
After paying operating expenses, thank you. Net revenue coverage. So advantages, you see, it's a reliable source of revenue, right? People are generally going to pay their utility bills. And if they don't, they get their service shut out, right? So you need a resolution, as Mark talked about, adopted by the town council. Negatives, so if you have a sewer revenue bond, the revenues that you're using to pay the bond are your sewer revenues, right? You're not going to pull in your sales tax, it's those revenues. And we talked about interest rate. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Okay, so sales tax, excise sales tax revenue bonds, they work the same way. So you're pledging your sales tax revenue, specifically sales tax. So Salt Lake County, for example, we're working with them right now to issue about 125 million in the marketplace of sales tax revenue bonds. And they're using that to purchase the new Overstock building that's now going to be the new Salt Lake County Government Center. And kind of interesting to kind of hear you guys talk about your government center and what you want to do and how you want to do it. Because Salt Lake County went through a huge study to go, do we keep it? Do we knock it down? Do we lease them out? Do we have some private, what revenue can we get from the private revenues? And in the end, what worked for them was just buying a new building and a new location. And they're issuing these sales tax revenue bonds to do that. Okay, so same thing with your utility revenue bonds. You have to have some kind of coverage factor more than just your debt service, right? So you see here, typically with sales tax or excise revenue bonds, you're going to have one and a half times to two times coverage. Okay, next slide, lease revenue bonds. Okay, so with your utility revenue bonds and your sales tax revenue bonds, you're pledging the revenues. With the lease revenue bond, you're pledging the asset itself. So you would need to set up a building authority. It's the building authority that actually issues the bonds. The town leases it from the, from the building authority. Mark talked about the annual appropriation. So what happens is the town council annually appropriates the funds to be able to make the payment on the bond. So basically, they're paying the lease, right? You're paying the lease to the town council. These are a little bit more complicated because it is a lease revenue. You have more documents, who owns the land, are there ground leases, all that kind of thing. But lease revenue bonds are actually used quite a bit. The state actually uses lease revenue bonds to build their liquor stores. They have the building authority actually issue them and lease them that way. But school districts also are using lease revenue bonds quite a bit because they have to build new schools and publics aren't always approving higher taxes on the general obligations. So sometimes they will issue lease revenue bonds to build a new school. So it can work well when it's funded because you can use whatever source you want, right? It's just the town council going, yes, we're going to appropriate, you know, 200,000 or whatever to make the lease payments on the lease revenue bonds. But that revenue can come from wherever. Disadvantages, it is subject to annual appropriation. Interest rates higher than if it's a GO bond. Title insurance is required, lease agreements, no new revenues generated to aid payment of debt. Okay, next slide, special assessment areas. So Mark talked a little bit about those. We actually administer a lot of special assessment areas. So I don't know if you guys are familiar with Red Ledges up in Heber. So Red Ledges is a special assessment area. So they went to Twin Creek Special Service District when they were getting ready to develop to see if they would be willing to issue the bonds to put in the water and sewer infrastructure. Because Twin Creek Special Service District can take their rating and issue the bonds with a lot higher rating, so a lower interest rate, than if the developer just issued basically a dirt bond, right? Because the only collateral they had was the dirt. So Twin Creek Special Service District issued the bonds on behalf of Red Ledges. Then each property pays the assessment. So with a special assessment bond, it's tied to the property. So whoever owns the property pays the assessment. Mark talked about tax increment bonds. Hermon Town Center did something interesting. They also have an assessment area that they're financing with tax increment. So this says annual assessment is added to property tax bill. That's not always the case. A lot of times, the assessment is collected separate than the property tax bill. Public infrastructure districts, Mark talked about those a little bit, used by developers to reduce the cost of capital because then the bonds can be issued to pay the infrastructure costs, which is the huge cost when you're setting up.
Let me just give you some perspective. I worked with a couple of public infrastructure districts in Wausatch County this year. And I think their cost of capital was like 12% from a private lender versus when they went to the market, the cost was around 6%. So there's a tremendous motivation for them to try and get access to lower cost.
To a tax-exempt municipal issuer.
Between the two bonds, it was like $80 million, so.
Okay, all right. So state revolving loan funds are another option for municipal entities to be able to access funds for water and sewer. Drinking water, secondary water, you've got Division of Drinking Water, Department of Environmental Quality, Bureau of Water Resources. So these are also options. Eligibility and interest rate tied to the medium adjusted gross income of the community. Most of the loans do have a really low interest rate, which is probably flash, 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 why everybody likes them. There's a 1% loan origination fee. But there are additional steps that you have to go through to comply, of course, to get, to get the low interest rate. And also, to get money from state revolving loan funds, generally, this is going to take the longest of any way you do some financing. So in the next two screens, I'll talk about some, a couple of options that are probably the quickest. Then the market would be in the middle. State revolving loan funds, you get a great interest rate, but it is a longer process. Also, you need a debt service reserve fund, which is generally equal to one payment over a 10-year period. Usually, whatever your biggest payment is, you have to set that aside and have it there just in case one year you didn't have the money. You've got that debt service reserve fund as a backup. And then Zions, if you ended up applying for a loan from a state revolving loan fund, we would act as your, you would need a municipal advisor in that capacity. Okay, so another option to get money is a direct placement. Zions does have a portfolio and does buy, does buy, issue the debt, buy the loans. Generally, they're interested in purchasing bonds. They will fix them over a 10-year period. You can go longer than 10 years, but Zions won't fix the interest rate for longer than 10 years. Zions does offer callable anytime, which is a really nice feature. So basically, what that means is you could pay the loan off at any time without any penalty or you could refinance it at any time without any penalty. There's no debt service reserve fund required. I think Mark has worked with the police department to do some vehicles.
Yeah, some of the administrative staff.
Okay.
And it's been a few years.
Yeah, I remember talking about those with my.
Okay. All right, let's move on. The last one is private placement. So in a private placement, bonds are purchased by a bank, not Zions, and held in their investment portfolio. So for example, right now, Santaquin City is looking for $3.1 million for some sewer repairs and replacements. And so they are doing a $3.1 million sewer revenue bond, and they're doing it as a direct placement. So what happens is we would send out a request for bids to a bunch of different banks, telling them what the money's needed for, a lot of information about the city of Payson, and then we get bids back. And I think we got about four bids back on Santaquin. So then they will look at that and decide which one they.
In fact, the bids that we saw last night, they had a 10-year option, a 15-year option, and a 20-year option to see, you know, what the difference in interest rates were over those timeframes. And, you know, there's varying call features. And so we have access to, you know, people we know that are actively purchasing those for their portfolios.
Is it true that if you give up the call features and the bells and whistles, that that's how you drive the lowest possible rate?
To a certain extent.
Usually, bonds issued in the public market are typically call-protected for 10 years. If we seek bids, say, from JP Morgan Chase, their best rate is going to be non-callable. And they'll have maybe a five-year call or a seven-year call. And every time the, the, the lower the call year is, the higher the rate is, so.
Yeah, so you balance that against how much, right? How much money you're borrowing and does it really make a difference for the basis?
And what's the likelihood of interest rates going down?
But there is definitely that trade-off, yeah.
I happen to think that we don't need a lot of protection on the call and that we could just be non-call life on a 10-year bond. And I think that it would lead us to the lowest rate.
The best rate.
I think so. But if you think interest rates are going to go down significantly in the coming years, it may not be a great place to be.
Yeah, I think we're too small speculating on interest rates.
Well.
This is going to be our only bond offering probably for some time. Certainly, it's been the only bond offering for a while.
For a while. We're not talking 100 million years, so, right? If you take, yeah, 10 basis points by, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need to buy a bunch of features that we're not going to use via a higher lien.
Sure, yeah. And that's why it's nice to send out these requests for bids because we do get back, right, the various options. And it's easy for you to look and go, this one has a call feature for this amount. This one does not for this amount, so it's a good comparison.
I don't want to open up a can of worms or slow you guys down. But I hope if we issue any debt, we have the fewest issues possible. But we have, one thing we've talked about that I think we want to hear these guys discuss or respond to is the notion of borrowing once and then funding not only a building but water and sewer projects. So we know we need to build a building, but we also have a great deal of expenses in the next 10 or 15 years on the water and sewer systems. And I mean, due to this relationship between the cost of capital and market rates, I think we have to think about, at least acknowledge the potential to definance water and sewer projects as well.
Yeah, I think the co-mingling of that seems a little suspect. Like, you know, it seems to me like, like, we could have other bond issuances or have a water district bond or water revenue bond. But that's really a different funding mechanism than the general fund. I think the general fund is probably only going to have the one obligation for some degree of tone.
Which is why I wanted to ask about the state revolving fund for water and sewer. You said it takes longer, define longer. Is it six months, is it two years?
I think it's six to 12 months, isn't it, Mark? Somewhere in there.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, kind of in the last slide, I mentioned that. But a lot of it's dependent on you as to how responsive you are to providing all the requested information that they'll need in order to be able to close the bonds.
That's funny, you guys think that six to 12 is long? Because I feel like the way that we, how we operate here, I'm like, six to 12 months? I'm like, that seems fine. Yeah, but you can do it like, like for a market issue, right? If you, you know what you're doing, you move in through, you can get it 90 days, so, yeah. And Mark is going to talk about that in the last couple of slides. So I think that's the last one. Go ahead to the next one. I think Mark's just going to wrap it up with the last couple, talking about market issuance and timing.
Go ahead with this one, Jeanette. It was the last couple I was going to.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so market issuance, so there's two types of market issuances. So you can go out for what's called a competitive sale. And that's exactly what it sounds like. It's a competitive sale. So we put together a document that tells investors everything they would want to know about the town of Alta. We send it out there through various distribution platforms who get it out there to the investment community. We set an actual date and time for the sale of your bonds. And it's kind of like being on eBay. So there's a platform called Parity Platform. And so if we say your bonds are going to be for sale, you know, on like November 3rd at 9:30 a.m., then we would all get online on the Parity Platform like 20 minutes before and kind of, by that point, we will know. So what happens usually the day before is various investors will sign up to bid. And so we'll look and see, okay, who's interested in your bonds? Is it Bank of America? Is it Capital One? Is it Fidelity, right? And so we'll kind of look at that. We'll look at what other sales are going on that day. And then at 9:30 a.m., so generally, the bids, this is why it's like eBay, because generally, the bids come in like 30 seconds before 9:30 a.m. on that day. And so right at that time, the bidding ends, and it's a blind bid for the entities bidding. They don't know how many others are bidding and they don't know what their bid is. So everybody is just basically putting in their best bid. We press a little button, it shows us what everybody's bid is, and the lowest bid wins. So that's basically how a competitive sale works. And we do competitive sales generally if it's a little bit larger of an issue, like the Salt Lake County one we're doing, as a competitive sale, and if it's not super complicated. So this is just a sales tax revenue bond. It's not that complicated. We do it as a competitive sale. The Cottonwood Heights one, we did as a competitive sale. The other type of sale you can do in the market is called a negotiated sale. And that's where, ahead of time, you would hire an underwriter because it's a little too competitive for the market. So for example, we just sold a couple hundred million bonds for Utah Transit Authority. We did these as a negotiated sale because it was pretty complicated. We had some new money, we had some refunding, and then we were tendering some bonds. And so what you do is you send out a request for an underwriter. You give all the details of the sale of the issuer, whatever. And then you get a bunch of underwriters back who say, yes, we are interested in being the underwriter for your bonds. And here's our terms, here's our, here's our, you know, yeah, here's our fees, kind of what we think the market looks like, what we think we could sell your bonds for. And those are the two types of market issuances. And if you do a market issuance, then we do need to put together this document called the official statement that Mark referred to, that just, we have to tell the investment community about you, and it's required by law. Yeah, sorry.
I have a couple of questions. So the underwriter is really a broker from a kind, from an SEC standpoint.
Exactly. He's buying them and selling them, yes.
Yep. And so, and the people that are investing into these pools, they're always, in this case, they'd be institutional, they'd be banks. We're not going to have like an SEC-accredited investor-type consideration we have to look at and things like this? Is it all?
It's generally going to be institutional investors and banks.
Okay.
And the other thing with a market transaction is it requires a bond rating. So that's an additional cost.
And then who determines that?
Which is a fairly significant cost.
The rating of that.
For S and P to come in and rate you.
We would go through Moody's or S and P or Fitch. We kind of have favorites based on how we feel they rate the type of bond that we're looking to sell.
For example, Moody's does a lot of the school, school bond issuances.
Can I ask you two a pointed question? Since you're here advising the town of Alta? How well do you think we would position in that relative to other small towns as far as how they look at us?
I haven't, I personally haven't looked at your information. Like, we have some, we have some scales we can look at to kind of guess what we think your rating would be. I haven't looked at your data closely enough to be able to answer that for you, but.
It would be good to know.
All the things you need to be mindful of is the rating is tied to the revenue pledge. So you would have a GO bond rating, maybe different than a sewer bond rating or a water bond rating.
Right.
For sales.
Okay.
For sales.
Okay.
What's the revenue pleasure of this size?
Tight.
Tight, yeah.
And then bond enhancement, credit guarantee, are all these?
You can buy bond insurance to get a double A rating equivalent typically, if you can find somebody that's willing to sell you the insurance.
And do you go down that very often? Or are these the most owned?
Usually, if we're, you know, A-plus or worse, you know, triple B-plus, A-minus, A, A-plus, we would, we would evaluate, you know, what do we think the rate difference is that we would see with bond insurance versus without it, and is the, is the cost benefit there?
And the sure, it generally brings you up to triple A.
Double A.
Oh, double A. And that's like NBI or somebody like that.
I'd have to look and see. Yeah. Who double A? Some might be Spanish, Spanish Fork.
I did some bond insurance for Midway. I did some for North Davis Spire District as well, where it made sense. I'm trying, my.
So they actually save money, like paying the insurance premium and then getting a lower rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, we think that there's value in certain circumstances.
We haven't done a lot with insurance lately, but sometimes.
We're just so small.
You are. You're really small. We probably wouldn't do, yeah.
Thirty million on Cottonwood Heights' tax base is, I don't know whether that's.
That's $165 a year.
Yeah. Or five, five million on Midway's tax base. I mean.
It's probably like 60 bucks or something.
Yeah, yeah. But, again, those aren't necessarily the factors that affect it. So I made a list of communities, small communities that have infrastructure to talk to about whether it is.
So I'm doing a private placement on an $8.2 million water revenue bond for Woods Cross City. I'm just sending out the bids tomorrow. So the, the difference between the market rates and private placements rates, there is a difference, mind you. It's, but sometimes the brain damage and the additional costs, people, we give them options. This is what we think you'll get under these circumstances, and this is what you, you know, we give them indicative rates and tell them the pros and cons, and they ultimately decide what's.
But the direct placement of the bond to the bank's portfolio, which I think probably seems like maybe the route for us, the bank doesn't require, generally doesn't require insurance?
It doesn't. You don't need to get a rating. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of advantage there.
For the rating with the direct placement and private.
So I think you've heard, we're looking for 10 or 15 million dollars to build a building. What, what are these options are you recommending for us?
Well, we don't have a municipal advisor relationship currently, and we are prohibited from making recommendations as to timing, terms, and structure absent that. But we can make general observations. If we were your municipal advisor, we would run indicative rates for $15 million or 10 or whatever in market, and look at what the private placement rates are, and see what the difference is, what the annual payments look like, and take it back to you and see what your pleasure is. To go to the market, you need somewhat of a robust staff or access to somebody that can help you with the information that we need for the official statement. But it's in that range to where it, it could go either way.
Either way, I mean?
Private placement or public market.
Can you describe what the municipal advisor relationship really is? Is it based off of what you're borrowing? Is it just a flat fee? How does that work?
Our rates are, usually have a minimum fee, and then it's usually, depending on the type of bond, a per dollar, I mean, say, a two or three dollar per bond, or per thousand dollars for the bond, the total bonds that are issued.
But we don't, and maybe this is unique designs, or maybe I didn't hear you guys actually, if you say it that, this way, but we don't pay until debt is issued, right?
That's correct.
If we don't ever go, if we don't ever issue debt, then we don't pay this way.
We get paid when the bonds are issued.
Check out the person next business.
Yeah. If you order before midnight tonight, there's not an obligation.
There's no two for one or anything, no.
And you don't want to be the advisor if we end up opting for the sell them to your own portfolio.
That's correct. We couldn't, we get a law firm or something.
You can't do both. Yeah.
Yeah. So we get somebody else to be the advisor on if we go down.
And, and we can't advise on a specific transaction. If you come to us and say, hey, what would Zions do? And we say, well, we can tell you, this is what we can do. But we can't say, this is what you should do.
Right.
And we would give you, if you had a municipal advisor relationship, we'd give you a disclosure notice saying, we're not acting in a fiduciary role. As a municipal advisor, we are acting in a fiduciary role. We're obligated to act in your best interests at all times. So, so just quick bonding steps. Starts by the adoption of a parameters resolution by the town council, which basically sets the framework for the, the bonds that the town would issue. What's the maximum amount of bonds the city would issue? What's the maximum term for which they would issue the bonds? What's the maximum interest rate that they're willing to pay? And if we go to market, what's the maximum discount the bonds can be sold at? So that's a, put in a resolution by bond council, you'd have to engage bond council to draft that. And then after that, you have to notice a public hearing to allow the public to come in and express opposition to or support for the issuance of the bond. Once the notice of public hearings published, it starts a 30-day contest period, which, you know, during, the, the public could, you know, go out and seek signatures to put a referendum from you issuing debt. I think Ivan City is going through a potential referendum on a property tax increase they just adopted. And after the contest period ends, without any referendums being filed, depending on the method their bonds are sold, their bonds are priced, bond documents are prepared, and the bond closing takes place afterwards. Usually, the mayor or the city manager are authorized to accept the terms of the bids or offer that's been received by the city, provided they're within the parameters that's been adopted by the council. And this can be done in a 60-day timeframe, what I just described. That, so the Utah State Revolving Fund, I mean, once we get to the, is probably a six to 12-month process. The Division of Drinking Water, if you're looking at water projects as your highest priority, culinary water projects, they are accepting applications on September 30 for their November 18 meeting. At that same meeting, they're also going to talk about not accepting any applications till the end of 2026, because they've, they don't have a lot of funds to loan. So, but there, there's processes that you have to go through, and with those revolving funds, submitting things to staff at those agencies to get through the process. That usually is a six to 12-month period. And a lot of it's really determined by how fast your engineers and the city is in getting the information to those folks. Market issuance can be done in 90 days. And the additional 30 days is, provides for the creation of the official statement and to go through the bond rating process. Is, is pretty much what adds up additional time to that. And that's it?
I thought one of the options here was a general obligation bond that required an election. And yet, I don't think.
It requires a bond election.
It requires a bond.
It has to be on the ballot in November.
It has to be on ballot in November.
Yeah. And that wasn't one of your steps, or was it?
Who's a, who's a question?
Yeah, it would be similar to these steps you were just having.
Well, the election takes place at the very last step.
The very last step.
Shows the bond election.
Yeah, got it.
But you need to do that on the. But you need to do that on the direct placement to your portfolio as well as.
Not if, it's not a, if it's a GO bond, yes. But.
Maybe not a water bond or revenue bond.
It really depends on the size, mostly as to what would dictate whether you'd go. I wouldn't anticipate a public offering on a water bond for you folks. And you typically don't see water bonds go into general election, a GO election, because it's a property tax pledge. Now, I, I did this bond election for Kane County School District that I mentioned earlier, the 1.36% rate. They had sufficient cash flow to make the bond payments, but they still went out to the citizenry because they wanted to get the lower interest rate. And they said, we will not increase your taxes if you pass this bond. But at the same time, still 30% of the community voted against it. And so I think that's kind of a baseline, is 30% of your population is going to oppose anything, regardless of it impacts them negatively or not. So.
You said there are 150 registered voters. What fraction of those are property owners?
I don't know. I, I would say probably two.
I guess three quarters.
I was going to guess three quarters or two-thirds are property owners. And that's my, that's why I kept asking that question. That's my one thing that makes me nervous about that type of a bond, is that you, we would have a lot of people funding that don't own property. You know, like.
I mean, I could, I could look and be.
But like, for example, me, I live in employee housing at the ski area, and I could vote for this, but I'm not a property owner. So that, that's just, that's the only one that makes me a little hesitant about doing that type of a bond, is that we up here have only 150 voters, and I'm pretty sure a chunk of them are not property owners. They're just renting, or they're in some sort of housing, or they're lodge employees, or whatever. I mean, I know at least five ski area employees that aren't even here in the summertime, but they're registered voters because they live here in the winter. So that was just my.
30% of our, our voter rolls, right?
I know. So that's, that's the only thing about that type of a bond that makes me a little bit nervous, is that we would be asking our voters to vote on something that's going to impact the property owners, but those people voting on it aren't all property owners.
So we'll be more likely to pass it.
Maybe, maybe not. But I'm just saying.
Because they'll say it doesn't impact me.
But I also don't think that's very fair to our property owners. So that's why I'm a little kind of leery about that one, is that I feel like we'd be imposing something on our property owners that maybe they didn't all get a say in. But that's just it. So every city has that. It's just I do feel we have a, like a.
I think that's, I think that's just part of the political.
For sure.
Scale weighing that the council has to do. And there are other ways to take input besides a vote. And, I mean, the, some of the comparables we need to assess are other resort communities.
For sure. Yeah.
You know, park, think of how many, how many property owners in Park City are our voters? I mean.
No, it's true. It's just something that, that's the only part on that one.
Their property tax rate is sort of low, because.
I think the thing that the property owners are going to care about is, did they have a right, did they have an opportunity to vote? Or did the tax get passed, or the increase in expense to them get passed, without them having a right to vote? As long as they can vote, I think that they'll be.
I think most of our property owners can't vote in the town. They don't vote in the town of Alta. I think most of our property owners don't, because they're second homes.
Yeah.
I don't think they all vote here. I think they vote somewhere else. So that's all I have to weigh in on.
I'll add that some property owners may be concerned about whether they're going to get served for any of the taxes that they pay.
Okay. I mean, we can talk about it more, but I'm just saying that that is my only, that's why I had a bunch of questions about that one.
I think it's a town council comfort level thing, on the town council. If the town council doesn't feel like the non-voting property owners are, you know, support it, then they can decide to go another route.
For sure. And that's, that's just one of the ones I just.
It's a hard temperature to take.
But there aren't a lot of other good routes that are taken. Like, like if you said, well, we don't want to have a general obligation election, I don't see where, like, the building money is going to fit into really any of those other categories that gracefully.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I mean, there, in the finance encyclopedia, the notion of a TRT bond comes up. It's interesting to look at the code to see whether those are general restricted.
You know, your sales tax revenue bonds can be transited.
Right. So, I mean, there's, you know, what are we going to get on $200,000 a year in debt service capability? And, you know, how stable is that revenue over a 30-year term or 20-year term here, here in Alta? Who knows? So, right, it's just.
So your options.
The Geo, the Geo's the same thing, so.
The Geo seems like the one. And, and then I think when you get down to the nuts of the underwriting and the public market, you're going to say, guys, God save you, let's just do a direct placement with these guys. You know, because we don't have a huge master fund to jam up all the, all the stuff a public market underwriter will want. Yeah, so doing it for a direct placement, I think would be best burdensome to the staff.
Yeah. Another thing that comes into play is the tax impact on primary residences is less than non-primary and commercial. Because the impact to primary residence is less than to commercial and non-primary residences, because they're only paying 55% of market value versus 100%.
Burning question. Does our total taxable value figure, is that post-deduction or pre-deduction? So if we've got, whatever, $340 million in taxable value, is that, is that after primary residents' taxable values have been?
It would be after primary residents, if it's taxable.
Because you've got your market value, your taxable value. So your taxable value is after your deduction for primary. Your market value includes 100% of everything.
Okay. And that's our 340, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever route we go, whether we have an election or not, I think we need to approach this as a political campaign.
Oh, yes.
And one of the things that we can do is, particularly for somebody underrepresented, you know, people that can't vote here, but might be property owners, we may even want to have a committee that is partially staffed by citizens that aren't represented in other ways, to actually make the formal recommendation about the route that we go.
I'll just say, because you were talking about general obligation for the building, right? What other? So your other option for that is the lease revenue bond. So municipal entities use the lease revenue bond for new buildings.
And in private places.
That's just an option. And that, avoid the election.
Yeah. I don't think that would be well received.
It's just, it's just an option. Thank you so much. Hey, you're so welcome. Yeah.
That was really great. Thank you.
Little sandwich, right?
Lucky.
Okay, gang. A couple of folks have already had to go, but I think it's just, we'll do a quick summary and next steps. Chris, I guess I'd like your thoughts here.
Well, this is, this went the way I thought it was. I thought it would go, is a really good discussion. I think we're, we're, we're at the orographic moment, where the grapple's up in the cloud, and we need to let the grains of snow precipitate a little bit. But I think, I think we're, I think it's maybe just going to take another discussion for us to recognize the consensus that we've built. But I do think we've essentially built a consent, a stronger consensus around prioritizing the fire, the post office site, we're going to call it the post office now, this is essential for the political campaign.
Yeah.
That prioritizes essential functions. I think we have to decide how much additional, you know, existing programming that exists over there, we retain. That's, that's the, that's the multipurpose space. I think, I think we need, we have some tough choices to make about what do we need, what is the stage in our process when we're going to refine and finalize that design? Because I just don't think we're going to be able to make the right decision until we're working with the design team. So I just, that's sort of where my mind is going, is what kind of expertise do we need to actually put our pencils down on what the design is going to be? And then, and I think, I mean, I don't want to say we're going to do a bond election, but I think you're right, that that's simply the most capable-looking option for us. And I'm. I'm, you know, again, the, those options, the, you know, there, the examples we've discussed are just, even eight million for the Woods Cross Water System, I mean, I imagine they have fifty times the connections that we have, so the rate impact is, is, is much lower. So, I think we've, I'd love to be able to do some research on what's truly small entities, what kind of debt financing they've, they've used. But I think we're, I think we need to move in that direction, because there are a lot of steps to take if we're going to go in August. I mean, another variable that we discuss is that there is no municipal election next year, so it's a, it's a midterm election. So, I mean, anyways, there are lots of variables.
But we're both on mail still. It would be...
Well, we'll see what happens next session, I guess.
I mean, that kind of does reach anybody, even if it's not a, well, saddle up for the presidential election. I mean, you know, you still pay attention to the cost.
I guess one more next step, I think we need to, we need to have another discussion like this about water and sewer. Because if we're talking about raising property taxes to fund a building, one way or another, it's another proposition when we think about what are the rate increases necessary to fund the water and sewer projects. So, I just think that's another, that's another half of the apple, more or less, in terms of dollars, that we have to, you know, I like to slice apples before eating them, but...
Yeah.
I, I'd suggest that we think about, and I think this is consistent with what you've been saying today. You know, I think on the design side, you know, moving to like a 10% design, and with maybe one or two options in play there.
So you get better on the cost.
Yeah, just a 10% step wouldn't be a huge amount of architecture, and I think that would be the right next step. And then, from 10, you'd start to do site assessment, and then maybe you'd move to a 30% design level after that.
Yeah.
And then you'd be ready to, to be on track for deciding if you could, wanted to have a bond election or not.
Yeah, because every time you do that...
I think a 30% design would give you that insight.
Yeah. I think, I think every time we do that, it becomes more clear. Everything comes into focus.
With each iteration.
It is iterative.
Yeah. So I think you're going to have to eventually get to probably 30% design before you'd call for the election. But I think a 10% design would put you on the way, and you could narrow it from, like, sort of now, we still have, kind of playing with two ideas, right?
So 10% for funding, 10% to identify the budget.
Take concept. It's architectural design.
For requirements. I think it's requirement, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about...
The architectural design would be what they call a 10% design.
Yeah.
So the architect is doing sort of 10% of the total amount of order. And then that, you would decide, do you really want to still pursue two options? Do you want to have one? And then, when you get to that decision, then you'd go to like a 30% design level. So he'd come back with the thing, building 30% design. And you'd probably put it in the ground at 80% design.
And given that we've missed the suspense date for...
This year.
Right. We're in a good position, I think.
We've got 11 months.
Well, you can, no, it's a couple, it's a couple of conversations.
It's going to take a couple of budget amendments, though, you know, like, it's a, that's a super heavy lift.
Okay.
However, I, I mean...
If we can't make it, we don't make it.
Yeah, right.
I think it'd be hard for us to do this first one, based on a 10% design called the bond election. I think that wouldn't be filled out enough, like a 10% architectural design. Let's say, oh, let's go ahead and start the public process. I don't think that the design would be fleshed out enough for people. You can't just be boxes and shadow boxes and stuff. It's going to have to actually look like a building.
And if we miss next year, we miss next year. And we keep moving forward. That's what the town does.
Yeah, right.
I think that's the crucial piece, right? Keep moving forward.
Yes, yeah.
And I think there are already some plans in place to continue these conversations. Jen, I'd like you just to outline the, about the communication and the recording piece and the videography and whatnot as we close.
Yeah, so we're ready to wrap up here in a minute. We invite everybody to stay and eat lunch. Once we officially adjourn the meeting, though, just as a reminder, I know everybody loves this, but we have to kind of cease talking about this sort of thing. No town business, so, you know, casual chit-chat about your hike yesterday, all that sort of stuff. So, just be respectful of that. And, I think that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, for notes.
Since, aside from your esteemed guests, I think that because I am not an elected official and not a statutory official nor staff, I can get, talk about whatever I want.
Just not with two counts, not with three counts.
Yeah. It's just, it's just clear.
Yeah, just now with two minutes.
To whom may, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, I think Chris and the team, and you have spent a lot of time planning this, I just wanted to, you know, wrap up by doing a quick evaluation. What did you like about the session today? What did you think could have changed to make it better? Thoughts?
Let me say that I think that the preparation for this, particularly Chris's done, is magnificent.
Well done.
It was really, this was really laid out. Well...
My only request was that we had two more hours to keep going. Because I feel like we're, you know, we're rolling.
We stayed strong all the way to the end, because of the shorter duration. I think we carried, you know, there was a lot of momentum all the way to the finish line today, as it was that, some of them have kind of watered that last hour a little bit. I also think that it was good that you were more flexible. Today's meeting format seemed a little more flexible than some of them in the past, which were pretty rigid in structure. Like, I think, you know, veering towards that open discussion about the breakout sessions, that was really good, because it kept the momentum alive.
Good.
Yeah. I like that format. We got up and moved around, ran into small groups.
But we weren't forced to stay in the small group format for longer than it was useful.
Yep, yeah.
Okay. Good. Anything else? Any other thoughts, comments? Okay. Mayor, would you close, would you close this formally?
Oh, do we have to formally close this?
It's public.
Um, do we take a vote?
Yep.
All right. I'm sure that we adjourn this session.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
There's three of us left.
Yes.
Excellent. Great job, everyone.
Meeting is adjourned.